So, good morning. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
I can't hear in favor.
Second.
All in favor. Oppose. Alright, we have an agenda. Mr. Welper is under the weather today and it's probably a better idea that he not bring the flu around all of us. But, we are going to start our first presentation today is Leisure Services, so...
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I could just ask a question. I don't know if we specifically talked about this something, if we did, I might have missed it, but Welper mentions specifically to the department heads, it seems like so far everybody's just kind of been bringing a flat line. We've had a couple of position asks, but other than that, I mean, we didn't do the 2%, 5%, 10%, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, you're correct. The directions this year were to come in at base level, only what is necessary, and that mostly involved just the salary increases from the previous year and what other expenses had gone up. I also directed each department to put together presentations for us to be able to view like we're doing this time. And, part of the reason was to make sure that people understand exactly what each department does or does not do, so we can take a look at those items. If there is a request right now for a position, it is one that is deemed absolutely necessary at this point, and I don't believe there's more than 1, 2, 3 possibly at most without some type of restructuring being done in that department. So, those were the instructions. We gave out the schedule in which we're going to follow. I want to thank Mr. Murphy as well for sending us over an article about what another community had done with regards to their presentations, so we can thank him for being here this Saturday. But, it is taking somewhat of a motto from, was it Cedar Rapids or Iowa City?
Iowa City.
Yeah, Iowa City, where they did their presentations on a regular workday, and then they also did it on a Saturday, Saturday or Sunday, so that the public could come and give opportunities for people to be here at different times. Des Moines, with the presentations, we took a page out of Des Moines' book, it's the same thing that they do with regards to each department telling about what those departments do. But, the only difference is, we go into a little bit more depth about the budget portion than Des Moines had done as well. So, those were the directions, the instructions. You have a calendar of what will follow. A lot of work to do. And, as you know, just really quickly, the Finance Department right now is a little bit short-staffed. I think we're down like a position and a half, so we are just asking for you to bear with us as we try to make our way through this. So, that were the instructions this time. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you.
Paul.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the first slide, I'm not going to read to you, but it's our mission statement. It's been up here for a while, and by the way, I'm glad to see that the Clerk's office has our PowerPoint, and I think the others as well, online, so anyone can review this. That way, I also have a few printed copies if someone wants a printed copy of this presentation. So, Waterloo Leisure Services' mission statement is all about quality of life for our city. And, we really exist to make this city livable and a great place to have fun and just enjoy life, and attract people from outside the area to come play here and work here. We have five major budgets in order to accomplish this mission. Parks and Forestry, Downtown, Golf Courses, Sports Plex, Sports and Youth Services, and Young Arena. The Parks budget, we maintain 52 parks and three recreation areas, 60 miles plus of paved trail. We've got a number of natural areas, the biggest being the 1,100 acre Leonard Kutaske Green Belt. We have an urban forestry program that has really ramped up over the last couple of years, and that's because of our beloved ash trees coming down. And, if anyone's been near Burns Park lately, you'll see a giant pile of logs. We've had a massive removal operation, and the trees are dying as we speak. If you go around town and look, you'll notice that the signs of decay and demise are everywhere in the ash trees. I want to thank the council, I applaud the council and the mayor and mayor's past for recognizing this was going to be a big problem for the city and stepping up to help us fund this necessary removal and replacement of trees. We also, in this budget, house all of our administration for the entire department. Downtown Area Maintenance is one of our newest budgets, and that was established to take care of all the millions and millions of dollars that we've invested in improving our downtown. And, everything from the amphitheater to the spray park to the Riverwalk system and, you know, I could go on and on, there's a list here. This is an area that, you know, we talk about, a lot about checking with other communities to see how they can, see how we can copy them, see how we can do as well as they do. This is one that's kind of cool, because we've been contacted by other communities across Iowa, and even I subscribe to a National Recreation and Parks, kind of a daily chat page, and we've been asked on this and the Sports Plex by multiple people how we've managed to come up with such a renaissance. So, you know, it's kind of nice to be on that end of the spectrum where people are asking you, "How did you do it?" But, one of the ways we have to, one of the things we have to do to maintain it is to staff adequately and have the resources to take care of it. So, on that line, we are asking, and you've heard this before, so it's going to sound like a refrain, but we are asking for an additional, additional, I'm sorry, position here. We have come up with a way to fund it that involves removing a position from our Parks, our Parks budget, and utilizing some eligible road use tax, so I think there will be, or as it's shown in the budget, no net impact on the general fund. Mayor said I had 15 minutes, but he used five of it, let the record show. Golf Courses budget, this is, we're responsible for our 318 hold courses. Our courses, I think, are known across the state as some of the best. We host the biggest golf tournament, biggest professional golf tournament in the state. It's, we're very proud, it's a point of pride for the city of Waterloo and has been for many, many years. We do have fees to offset the majority of our expenses. As you all know, they don't offset all of them, but we are working hard to find ways to get that as close to break-even budget as possible. Next budget is the Sports Plex. You'll notice when you go through the numbers that we are requesting increases in this. That's one thing, but the good news is those increases are entirely offset by revenues, so it's a no-net impact on the general fund levy. We're entering our fourth year at the Sports Plex. Our memberships are at all-time high. Our programs and classes have, the numbers have gone up exponentially, so that's all good. Some things have, and you'll, when you go through the numbers, you'll notice have trended down a little bit. That would be facility rentals in particular. And, the main reason for that is we've made some changes. We had a private health fitness club in the Sports Plex, they're no longer there. We are repurposing that for our greatly increased membership base, so. And, we also had a community group that met there daily for the first year and a half or so, and they're no longer there. The good part of that is we need those spaces for our additional members and our additional programs, and the membership fees have more than made up for those changes. Sports and Youth Services, this is a budget that takes care of all of our, I guess, programming for our kids and our adults. We manage multiple complexes, the tennis center, baseball diamonds all over town, the pools. Basically, this is, this is our way of making sure that there's always something to do for the kids in our community and that we have exciting activities year-round. The Young Arena budget, and we do, by the way, have some of our managers in here if you have any detailed questions for them. Some of them were able to make it today. Chris Dolan is here from Young Arena. Young Arena, we operate a 3,500-seat ice arena, but it's much more than that. It's a community center, it's a place where people can go to walk for virtually free. We ask a couple bucks a week, but it's virtually free. It's a place where wrestling events happen, and you'll see in a later slide, it's a pretty substantial economic impact. This is another one that we operate close to break-even, not quite, and as you're all aware, we've had continuing negotiations with the Blackhawks, which greatly impact the bottom line. I'm happy to report those negotiations are amicable. We've met many, many times, and we've looked at many different formulas. Everything from them taking over the concessions entirely to us taking on additional duties, and we just haven't arrived at quite the best formula yet, so we're operating under our current contract. And, the numbers that you'll see in there are virtually unchanged, that's the reason. We're still in negotiations, so it's, in that regard, it's a status quo. So, we have some miscellaneous budgets. These are chargebacks and projects and golf course improvements. Those are relatively minor. If you have questions on those, let me know. This is our organizational chart. I was afraid this was going to be the problem. It's a little bit small and a little bit blurry, but it gives you the general idea. It shows the five different divisions and the employees under those divisions. Again, we are asking for a couple of changes. We're asking for an additional person in the downtown area. We're also asking for an additional person in the, a customer service position in the Sports Plex. Again, I'd like to reiterate that net effect on our general fund asking will be zero, actually maybe just a tiny bit to the positive. Next slide. Mayor asked us to highlight our accomplishments, and you're going to see on here, there's an awful lot of print. I absolutely don't have time to read all of these. They're posted online. Suffice to say, we're proud that we've had a lot of accomplishments in all of our budgets. So, I'm going to go through these rather rapidly. One thing you're going to note, on a lot of these accomplishments, we have a lot of help from non-general fund sources for these. For example, on the bottom of the slide, the Waterloo Bucks, we own that new scoreboard at the stadium. It's beautiful, new scoreboard, and the cost of that was borne in vast majority by the team and the Gaming Association. The playground you see on here is Community Development Block grant primarily, funding for that. Green Scene helps us with tree planting funds. The trail you see on the top there that circles Harold Getty Lake is a REAP project. So, a lot of these projects that we're proud to have accomplished came at very little cost to the local taxpayers. And, I hit the wrong button. I was afraid I might do that. Downtown Area Maintenance, number of accomplishments there as well. I'm not going to read through them all. We made some improvements to the railing to make the area near the amphitheater and Marx Park safer. We've got a neat new sport downtown. One thing I do want to dwell on just a little bit, and it's not just the downtown crew, although they're intimately familiar with the levy system downtown, and you'll see the photo there of them assembling the flood walls, the portable flood walls. Were it not for the team of employees and that, I include the Engineering Department and Public Works and everyone who chipped in, I don't want to miss anyone, but we had the second-largest flood in the history of this city just a few months ago, and we had relatively little damage. We had some damage in our parks, but our parks aren't protected. But, this levy system is key, and having employees that know what they're doing and on the ground, ready to roll when the projections go wildly up at the last minute is really pretty darn important. Golf highlights, again, we put some new improvements in the golf courses. There's some photos of those there. One of our signature accomplishments every year is hosting the Waterloo Open. This year, there was a full field and a waiting list for that. You'll notice the cross-country skier. We've expanded our cross-country skiing offerings to South Hills, and that's been really well-received. Obviously, we don't have much snow today, but we did have some snow earlier, and we had some rave reviews on that new course there. And, we did access some equipment from outside funding sources. The Sports Plex, another long list of accomplishments. Probably key among the accomplishments here is finally implementing the Silver Sneakers Program. That was much, much harder than anyone thought it might be, and it took us several years, actually, to get that going. But, it's resulted in 297 as of this writing, which is, it's up above that now, eligible Silver Sneakers members at the Sports Plex. It allows a lot of seniors to participate and become healthier and virtually have no investment in it. We get paid from the insurance company based on the visits that those seniors make. So, it's definitely a win-win. And then, if you go down the list, you'll see the numbers as far as the increased membership, the increased number of programs. We started hosting a, we became home to a professional basketball team, which is pretty neat, and just a whole lot of activities. A lot of tourism is driven here too, when you look at the events that are coming in. A big one coming up this year will be an archery event that's brand-new, and we're told that the mayor's going to have an apple shot off the top of his head, so we'll all be there to watch that. Right?
I hope I'm around that.
Sports and Youth Services, again, we're proud of our facilities, and we've, the vast majority of the funding for our riverfront sports park and our other complexes, and the major improvements that have been made there have been grant-funded. Willar Ballpark's been a great partner. Gaming has been a great partner. So, we had 950 organized baseball and softball games this past year, and 1,300 practices. It's just, it's a monumental task to get all these kids involved in this, and it really is astounding. Burns Park, the tennis center, we've always known we had a nice tennis center, but it was confirmed this year when we received the Tennis Association 2016 Facility of the Year Award, and it's a nice achievement, and it's a beautiful complex. Young Arena, a lot of highlights there as well. A lot of these are kind of behind the scenes with energy-efficient lighting that's been accomplished with Mid-American funds, so very little taxpayer money in that, and it's resulted in reduced energy bills, which is great. We have, on the lower right there, our new kitchen, which is really taken off. We have an expanded menu. One of the things Blackhawks during our negotiation said is, you know, our food choices just aren't that great. We need to, we need to give our fans something to really come to games for, and Chris and his staff have put this kitchen together with the help of city maintenance staff and others, and it's really becoming a profit center now, and it's helping on our bottom line. And, as you can see, it's sparkling clean, and they're keeping it that way. We've done some Wi-Fi upgrades, fire system upgrades, which are very important, but again, kind of behind the scenes. Credit card machines and all the concession stands, which are a great tool to increase sales, and the digital menu boards and ice system controls. So, again, kind of behind-the-scenes stuff, but important improvements. These are some of the numbers I was alluding to. These, without reading all the numbers, we have a lot of use at this arena. We have a varied use at the arena. Kind of a neat statistic on the bottom, and we were helped with this from the Waterloo Convention and Visitors' Bureau, just two of our major wrestling events had a $1.8 million economic impact. So, goals, you're going to see a whole bunch of goals too, and I asked the different divisions to come up with their own goals, so that's what you're going to see printed here. But, I want to, rather than read all these, just say that the strategic planning process led the council to adopt a number of goals. And, Goal 1 is, "Support the creation of new livable wage jobs through a balanced economic development approach of assisting existing businesses, fostering startups, attracting new employers, and cultivating an adequate workforce." One of the key strategies in that is to seek ways to create a live, work, and play environment with amenities that attract and retain population in Waterloo. So, our goals and objectives that are listed here, and I'm not going to read through, are all about making Waterloo a quality place to live and work. So, I'm going to, I'll just go through these. Again, they're posted online. This is the Parks Downtown Maintenance. Did I skip one? Yeah, here are all the different divisions and the goals that they set forth, which is good. It's a good exercise. I'm glad the mayor asked us to do it, because it's helpful for our staff to set goals, so you can go through theirs, those later. This is a summary of all of our funding, not with actual dollar numbers, but a percentage of fund sources. So, 50% of our entire roughly $7 million budget comes back to us in the form of charges for services. About 13% comes back from road use and sanitation, so that's pay at the pump and our garbage fees. 37% then comes from the general fund. So, that's my last slide. I think I met my quota, Mayor.
Yes, you did. Great job. A lot of information to go through.
So, I can take questions, or we can go to the line items, whatever you'd like to do from here.
Do high-level line items, changes, so the council knows exactly what's going to be different from the previous year, from this year, and then we can take some questions from council.
Okay, well, I had alluded to...
Can I ask one question?
Oh, sure.
Yes, sir.
Paul, go back to the organizational chart.
Okay.
Show me on the organizational chart where the two new positions are.
I wouldn't do that.
Are they depleted on the organizational chart?
They are reflected on that, and so, if you look at the far right, the bottom position, Customer Service Specialist.
Yep.
That's new.
Okay.
If you look at the very top, under Director, between Director and Assistant is Office Coordinator, Bookkeeper. There was an Administrative Secretary position there. That's been vacant, and we are eliminating that position. So, a portion of that funding goes to that lower-right corner. The only other change is if you go to the Downtown Maintenance, which is the box, the bottom box directly in the middle, you'll see two with Downtown Maintenance 2. That was a one previously. So, again, this is a requested, this is a chart showing the requested level.
Okay, right. But, that, the position you had last year that was vacant?
Administrative Secretary.
It wasn't vacant last year.
Oh, no, it was not. It's been vacant since May or June.
Eight, 215 it says here. But, anyway, you're eliminating that position?
Correct.
Okay. Paul, so, can you give a little more background as to the need for those positions that you're adding? Why would you add those? What's the need for that?
I'll start with the Customer Service Specialist at the Sports Plex, and I guess, we kind of had a lot of that help with Jean, our Administrative Secretary, who, this is difficult, because we lost her to cancer, so, you know, I started with that. But, Jean did a lot of that. We've rewritten this job description to put a lot of the things that she took on, on her own when we opened the Sports Plex. She went over there and just was just a fabulous help getting that thing up and running. So, the Customer Service Specialist reflects probably about half of what Jean's time was before. So, that, I guess, is, I should also note that this is a split position. This gets a little confusing. If you look at your personal work, personal services worksheets, you'll see that there's a percentage at the Sports Plex. So, this is partially funded by Sports, partially by Sports Plex, but the funding was pulled out of that Park budget where it was before. As to the Downtown Maintenance position, we did eliminate a six-month position to help achieve that funding for the second full-time Maintenance 2. We also utilized some eligible road use. The Downtown Maintenance crew has a significant amount of right-of-way road use eligible activity. So, that's, and to answer why that position is needed, again, we've had a continued growth of the number of facilities that we've had downtown, and it continues to grow. So, again, we are cutting back a part-time position. A lot of what we do in the winter down there, and that's a question we were kind of chatting a little bit before, I think it was, about golf employees, but you could have the same conversation about downtown employees. What do you do in the winter? Valid question. But, they're key employees when it comes to making sure that the snow removal is done effectively and safely for all of our downtown facilities, including the Arts Center, the Sports Plex, the Young Arena, and the other entities. And, a lot of those has to be done, have to be done weekends after hours, because the events don't stop with a regular work week.
Can you give me a ballpark of the total cost of those two positions?
Um...
You don't have to get, you don't have to get exact, but just like ballpark of the total cost of...
I can give you, I have a, I have a sheet on that. So, we have, we're removing the Administrative Secretary position. That's a total, total cost on it is 47, 237 plus benefits. What, was your question the total cost?
Salary plus benefits.
Okay, salary plus benefits for, and I think you're asking about not the one that's eliminated, but the Downtown Maintenance 2 and the Customer Service Position.
Yes.
So, those would be, Downtown Maintenance 2 would be 79, 782 total, and Customer Service Specialist would be, I've got that broken in half.
Sixty.
Sixty. Do you have that?
Yeah, and I just lost it.
Okay, it would be...
It's about...
It's actually $35,365 times two. Seventy, just over.
Yeah.
Seventy thousand and six, roughly. That's, does that answer your question? And I have a summary sheet, help me if you'd like that.
And so, have you considered, you know, just looking, not to try to be critical, but just trying to look at the budget and see what we could have efficiency here. Have you considered, you know, you have a mechanic here or a Customer Service Specialist, look at that job description, maybe bringing in some part-time folks, looking at the cost of benefits for a full-time employee as opposed to having a couple part-time employees?
And, we have looked at that, and we do that to the tune of, well, on the sheet here, it says 300 plus, but, yeah, roughly 300 temporary employees, and we try to utilize those wherever we can. And, you're right, they are less expensive. They don't have the benefits attached to them. But, it's very difficult to get someone trained to a high level of proficiency on maintaining irrigation systems we have throughout our irrigation systems we have throughout our downtown areas along the riverfront at the amphitheater and all these other buildings that I have told you about. It's difficult to get people trained and proficient on sophisticated equipment and so forth, and then not know whether they're coming back year after year. And turnover and ability to find qualified staff for, you know, even a decent pay rate without any benefits is a struggle. So, it's a give and take, and there are a couple of those departments, I'm looking at one over here too, that use an awful lot of part-time help, and we try to use it wherever we can. We also use a lot of nearly free help from our nearby university in Hawkeye and so forth, in the form of interns. So, you know, there's, there are a lot of ways to try to cut that back. That's the best I can answer that.
All right. Paul, can I just ask two more questions?
Sure.
Fifty-two parks.
Yes.
What are your thoughts? Do we use fifty-two parks in Waterloo?
There's probably a wide variance on the amount of use. Gates Park is highly used every day. Fern Spark is highly used every day. You have a whole lot of neighborhood parks in here, and you might drive by at any given time and seeing nobody in there. But you also have people from the neighborhoods who are coming in there and using them and enjoying the green space. So what we've found, when we've eliminated parks, and we have, case in point would be Black Hawk Park, which was over by the old Black Hawk School, got wiped out when the new Fred Becker School was developed. We hear from people, I say, "Don't take our neighborhood park out." In that case, we're able to work with the school board. They have an open space with Becker, kind of a win-win situation. But, boy, that's the best I can answer that, without doing a time motion study in every park. We always hear from the residents nearby if we talk about...
Yeah, you hear, you know, you hear neighborhood associations that want to put in like a community garden, that kind of thing, and that might be something to take a look at doing. Last question, just on the goals that you had on here, they're really vague, it's hard to measure them, it would be hard to hold you accountable to those goals because they're just, you know, make this look better, keep doing this. But, I mean, would you, could it be possible to make those a little bit more specific, measurable, to where they're more like a SMART goal, more than just like a value statement? They would be a goal, something you would achieve, you could break down year by year by year.
And I think that's possible. I might redirect that to the mayor a little bit, and I would think that if we were going to do something like that, we might want to do it citywide.
Okay.
Again, these came from my staff, with my direction, so some of them are, there's a wide variety of things on there, but...
I mean, they're, they're nice.
I get, I get your point, that they could be more succinct and measurable, and I would, again, ask the mayor for direction.
Yeah, we can, we can work, we can, we can work on some of these, but, you know, some of these are replace Gates Park golf maintenance building. Some of them are more quantitative, but, you know, maybe we can take a look at the one, you know, for instance, just an example to councilman Jacob's point, trim or remove tree-related hazards or the ash tree, maybe if there's a particular goal to try to remove five hundred, two hundred, you know, some of these, we can, we can whittle down a little bit more.
That's all right.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Schmidt.
Paul, I just want to clarify that downtown maintenance, that guy's part-time now, right? And you're going to make him full-time?
There, there isn't a specific individual attached to this, we'd have to go through the civil service process.
But I mean, that position is kind of...
There is a six-month position there now, and JB's in the audience, he's the manager responsible for that. If you want to ask him specifically what, what things need to be done that aren't being done there, he could address that. I'll leave that to you if you want to call him to Mike.
Hey, Paul, make sure you're speaking to Mike, too.
Okay. Is that, is it dead?
Michelle, can you get that one?
So are you saying you couldn't hear me this whole time?
I know.
Usually you guys let us know when you can't hear us. Did you? I'm sorry.
This room is chair. This is...
And they are chair.
Well, we tried. We'll, if everybody can speak up, that'll be good. Yep, it's only you, sir.
So Paul, following up on that, the fifty-two parks, I know we've talked about this in the past, but I, in my opinion, fifty-two parks, the three golf courses, you know, a lot of the really nice things about Waterloo, again, were developed when Waterloo was seventy-five, eighty thousand people, which we no longer are. And so I think that, you know, creates a strain on the taxpayers. And so, would it make sense to form a committee and take a look at that, rather than just keep kicking that can down the road as far as those parks? Because I think we both know there are parks in this community that are used very seldom. The immediate neighbors would not be happy, but five years from now, they'd never remember there was a park there.
Well, one thing you might find, and has Noel given his presentation yet, planning?
Yeah. Talking to the mic, Paul.
He's talking to you, Paul.
It's taped. Okay. I'm going to have to strain to get to the mic. When Noel does his presentation on planning, he'll, he might, and I would think probably will, will touch on the discussions we've had about potential sale of city property, including parks or portions of parks. So I don't know if you'd call it a committee, councilman, but we've had those discussions. In fact, we have identified some parcels that could be sold, and we'll look for more. We haven't identified yet any entire parks, but that doesn't mean we can't look at it.
And I think under the, under one portion of one of our strategic indicators, maybe we could take a look at some type of subcommittee to see, I know Noel would probably be happy about that, but that's something we can definitely take a look at. We can place that under one of our strategic initiatives.
And then, and then going back to the golf courses, and I know I and several council members are pretty avid golfers, and we very much appreciate our golf courses. Talking about what other communities are doing, you know, the problem with golf worldwide is golf plays down. It's nothing unique to Waterloo. And so are we looking at what other communities have done? I've heard some communities have taken eighteen hole courses and shrunk them back down to nine, and then sold the additional land for development, that type of thing, because people just aren't playing that much. It's just that reality. So have you looked at that kind of stuff?
We've looked at, can you hear me now? I, I'm struggling with these mics, but...
Sure, yeah.
We have looked at a number of different ways to try to cut our subsidy for golf. We've looked and followed very closely what Cedar Falls is doing, have met with their staff, have reviewed the agreement that they've done to, for major change, effectively privatizing golf in Cedar Falls. There are some, there are some good things to that, some bad things to that. As far as downsizing, I know there was some discussion about possibly selling one course, and your idea of modifying a course to nine holes instead of eighteen from a bottom line might make more sense than selling a course to someone who's going to actually operate it as a course, and then we will in turn compete with that course. We haven't looked at that specifically, but we certainly can.
That silver slipper delay thing, what was the cause of that? Was that from...
Sneaker?
The silver sneaker, I'm sorry.
The what? The cost is, it's actually a net benefit to the city.
What was the delay? You said it took several years to implement. Was that based on the insurance company, or what was the reason for the delay?
Mark, do you want to address that, since you're right there nodding your head, and you were in the middle of it? There's a mic there that might work better than mine.
And then state your name for the record, sir.
You don't have to tell us where you live.
Leisure Services. Basically, we had started to apply for it in June, the year before we opened. They will only offer so many places within a certain geographic area. So we just kept making our case. Who basically got it for us is all of our senior members that just kept calling continually, and eventually they got enough pressure from members that they added us as a site.
So just, we just had to get in line. Great, thanks. Paul, your comments about the city staff during the flood events, were those, were those folks volunteers, or were those folks on the clock?
We actually had both. This works. This mic is dead.
It works. You just, you just thought it works.
Okay, all right, thank you. We had both. We had a key core of city employees, and it's led, the engineering department is, actually runs the flood control system and so forth, but, so we have those people who have done it year after year, who lead the charge, so to speak. We actually hired a volunteer who showed up to help us. Not, I'm not saying we hired him on the spot. He helped us through the, he helped us through the flood.
Apparently didn't go to Catholic school, so go ahead.
No, no. I'll explain further. This gentleman helped us immensely, jumped, jumped in and helped with the downtown crew with some of the work that I showed in the slides there. We came to find out later, after it was all over, that he was looking for employment, and we needed someone to work for a part-time position in our downtown crew. So he has become a part-time employee. We didn't pay him for his volunteer work.
Got you. Well, my only, my only thought there was, there were hundreds, I think, of city residents that volunteered during that too. So, you know, I just wanted to make that...
And that, that's good, to make that point, that we appreciate all that help we got from everyone.
Your mechanic, is he kept busy? You've got your own mechanic, correct?
Yes, and I'm going to ask JB, since he's here, he oversees the mechanic position, to just kind of give you an overview of what this mechanic does for us. I think it works.
We're good to go here. JB Bolger, Leisure Services. Yes, our mechanic is incredibly busy. Overwhelmed would be a good word to use. So he maintains our tractor and mower fleet and our on-road vehicles, other than the very large on-road vehicles, the forestry-sized trucks we send to public works for that. But, yeah, we have to help him quite a bit just to keep our equipment fleet running.
And that was, I guess, the purpose of my question, is you are communicating with Mr. Rice and his department, and you work with him, because it sure seems like after his event, we need to be outsourcing some of that stuff. You know, this guy's two thousand hours behind. I just, it seems to me to make sense, we would just take the typical oil and lube and tire rotation, send that on down the road to a, you know, a public or a private business that could get that done and get it off the books, and probably a little bit more efficiently. Do you communicate, for example, like with Hawkeye Community College, with their new building? My understanding is they're going to have a certain number of meeting rooms and things like that, that I would think would almost compete with your Sportsplex. And, and again, the general reason for that question is I hear from downtown businesses especially, but business owners on a regular basis, how government, whether it's city, county, or Hawkeye, and you and I, compete with them as far as some of these great new venues we build. Well, that just took business away from those tax-paying businesses for meetings, for lunches, for wedding receptions, for a variety of things, and it almost seems to me now like we're, we're competing with each other, and none of, none of us, us being government, none of us are paying taxes. So that's not a good long-term plan. So I just wondered if, if you or anybody from the city, there's a coordination or communication going on there?
We have been in communication with Hawkeye Community College, and the mayor probably has the best connection of anyone in this room with Hawkeye Community College. We've communicated with them mostly on sharing of parking, because parking is a big issue, as you know, in that area. And indications are they're going to be gracious about sharing parking after hours for some of our events that happen down there. As to competing with rooms, room space, and are we concerned about rentals going down because they'll have rooms available? We have not had that conversation. I did touch on earlier in my presentation that our room rentals are down at the Sportsplex, and the reason for that is that we just have so many programs that we need to do to service our members, that we just don't have much room rental time available. I had to rent a room in this facility for my mother's ninetieth birthday party because we, I couldn't get one at the Sportsplex, it's busy, so...
And I think, I think with the Hawkeye coming in, it will be a net benefit to business owners. You're talking about right now, having two centers that are on opposite ends of the community coming to a downtown location. You have the potential of bringing in two thousand, fifteen hundred, thousand, five hundred students that were not in that particular area at that point. So we probably, probably need to add some more restaurants, need to add some more amenities to meet that demand that will be coming to our downtown area.
And then finally, you know, we've done a number of great things in downtown Waterloo in the last ten years that the mayor and I have been on the council, and a lot of that has come from state money, or gaming, or the WDC, and so we appreciate all that. But when you, when you look at those things, I mean, is there, is there a cost factor put into those so that after the Sportsplex, the Riverwalk, the whatever is built, the ongoing maintenance, sometimes it seems like we're almost, well, now we got this nice facility, whoops, now we're going to have to take care of it, so now we're going to have to add staff. I mean, is that talked about beforehand?
Yeah, I'm happy to report with the Sportsplex, yes, and we have a line specifically in the budget, setting aside money for maintenance, and it appears so far that we're able to take care of that without additional burden on the taxpayers. For the free and open to the public amenities, like the Riverwalk Loop and a number of other things, Mark's Park, for example, great project funded almost entirely by the Young Family and gaming and a number of sources, we are responsible to take care of that. And so, you know, your point is well-taken, that there, there is an increased maintenance responsibility with accepting, or not really accepting, going out to try to improve your downtown or anywhere else, there's maintenance that comes with that. So that's probably why I'm asking you today for, and have for the last couple of years, for that additional employee. So it's a little bit of a dilemma. I'd hate to think that we would, I hate to think what Waterloo would look like today without all of those amenities. We're going to host the national, or the Iowa Parking Recreation Association group here in another month or so, the statewide association, and, you know, I'm proud to show that group what we have in this community, because we really have done a lot for our citizens and visitors. But it comes at a cost, you're absolutely correct.
So in the Sportsplex, you do have a line item for equipment, exercise equipment, that kind of stuff, replacement, correct?
Correct, and Mark can address that specifically if...
That's fine, that's fine. That's, that's okay, I don't want to take up any more time.
Thanks. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Speak up, sir.
Hi, Pat.
Hello, how you doing there?
Paul, well, I, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate you and your department. One of the things that has struck me throughout the time that I've been doing this is your responsiveness to concerns or to different issues that come up. And wherever it is, there has been an immediate response, whether it be by email, or phone call, or even face-to-face contact, so I very much appreciate that, Paul, and the staff as well. I was very happy to see, because at the ward meetings that I have, there is that question that keeps getting asked about replacement costs for the, for the Sportsplex, as you know, and it was good to see that that was, that was mentioned here. I, I know that the rec trails, there's, there's more plans, I think, down the road to even improve on those, or add to those, I mean, and those are great. You know, when, when you talk about leisure services, you talk about quality of life issues, and I would hate like heck to see any of our parks sold off. Again, we've already sold off some of them, and I hope that that bleeding is over with. And the golf courses are great. I mean, we've been recognized repeatedly for our golf courses in the area, our metro courses, and I know the cost went up a little bit, but I think that the golfers are going to be able to do it. able to do it and take care of that. But, you know, downtown Waterloo has added, not just the Sportsplex, but then we've also got other amenities, quality-of-life, where, whether it be culture and arts, or leisure services. One thing is the deck hockey, and I don't know if anybody here's ever went to any of those, but that is one fast sport. Rough and tumble, and young people, but they also got, I think, groups my age, so if anybody really wants to get to me, they need to encourage me to get in that, and to get out there with that senior group, or maybe super-senior group. The other thing I wanted is, I know that councilman had made a comment about the private versus public sector and the competition, and, you know, my understanding is that competition helps with the lowering of prices and the cost to the public. So, I think competition, whether it be public or private, is a, is a good thing. And lastly, I want to commend all the public employees, not just within leisure services, but throughout the city of Waterloo, 'cause they are fantastic workers. They're held to an accountability standard that goes way beyond even the private sector, because they not only answer to the private sector, they answer to their boss, and then they have to be accountable as well to the public and that kind of input. So, I commend them, I commend you, Paul, and go for it, and thank you. I hope that those two positions that you have created with zeroing out, go through, you've been asking for the downtown maintenance for quite a while now, and I support that, Paul.
Paul, I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to go to a hockey game in Nashville, and one of the cool things about that facility, and I would just ask the Young Arena, maybe, to look at businesses, restaurants, to be a part of the food vending services, local businesses. It was a big hit with barbecue restaurants and other types of restaurants in Nashville. I talked to the staff at the arena there, many, many people that partook in that hockey event, and it was, it's a huge success. I mean, it's given Nashville residents, Nashville business owners, an opportunity to provide those types of service, and it gives them another idea, or it gives our citizens and those that come here to get a taste of what's going on in our community in terms of restaurants. So, it's just another goal, maybe, or a conversation, and I don't wanna add to your workload, but it's something I think that could be a part of that conversation.
Thank you, Tom. And that has been part of, as we negotiate with the Blackhawks, that's been a key part of the conversation, and you'll notice, when you go to a hockey game, there is a Chick-fil-A opportunity there. So, yeah, that's been recognized. A little bit of a give-and-take, when you franchise out some of your food, you lose a little bit of your profit margin, so we walk a little carefully on that, try to keep our profit margin as high as possible. But we've also, as I indicated earlier, talked about all different possibilities of how that is run, and that's a great observation, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Paul, just real quickly, 'cause we didn't, we didn't get into dollars. Can you give us, you told us about the position, how you came about that, but can you just give us a high-level overview of any monetary changes to your budget? Is it, you know?
Sure. Let me pull that up. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. While he's pulling that up, had a question, Paul, if you can address this. I remember something about the pools and the condition of the pools and the potential to have to do some work on those pools. Is there anything in your budget that concerns or covers that?
Good question, Councilman. The pools are nearing the end of their lifespan, and we had this discussion, I believe, last year during budget time. It's a, it's a capital issue more than an operating issue, but I should report that we have done some welding and painting and significant repairs. We're actually in the middle of a contract, aren't we, Mark? Is it not quite complete yet for some repairs to the pool? So, we feel we're entering the season with the pools in reasonably good condition, but that is something we need to keep on our, in our sights. We will need some major, probably new pools at some point. And we do have a master plan done by Water's Edge that is available, if you'd like to go through that with me. So, it kinda gives us some guidance and some estimates, but it's, it's a big project, and capital project that we'd probably be looking for multiple grants and other sources, along with some CIP funding. But thanks for bringing it up, we need to keep that in our sights, thank you.
So, Paul, when we go to 4100, so we can progress ahead, I think page five, just if you can, you don't have to go through everyone, 'cause everyone has the information, but we need to hear some numbers, so.
Okay.
If you just wanted, any changes? Oh, no.
There are a couple of changes in the parks budget. As I mentioned earlier, we're reducing an employee. We're also adding $20,000 for contracted services, that's line 1390. The reason for that is that the cost for contracting or mowing has continued to climb. The contractors have inched up on their bids. The other thing that is being added to that is some snow removal on Kimball Avenue. We added some sidewalk that needs to be taken care of there, and we're virtually maxed out with our full-time staff and what they can do, so we're, we're going to the private sector to help with that. So, I think those are the main ones in that budget.
Paul, can I ask a quick question? Who's mowing Sunnyside South? I get asked that question all the time. Are we mowing that, or they mowing that? The owners mowing it, or we mowing it?
JB, can you answer that?
Contractor working for the city is mowing Sunnyside South.
We're mowing it.
I believe that's because, as I understand it, and Noel can maybe address this, I think legally, the city is more or less the owner at this time. Noel, is that correct? Sunnyside South. So, it is our responsibility to mow.
When we go to the downtown area maintenance, that's what you spoke to about a little bit earlier, there'd be the addition.
Yes, that's the addition of that position.
Okay. Within our golf courses, is that a reduction at the bottom line?
There is a, there is a slight reduction in the bottom line, primarily due to some reduced benefit costs.
Okay. All right. Any other significant changes council and folks need to be aware of?
I should have you. No, I think the personnel.
What is that?
Yeah, the personnel changes that we're recommending are the major changes. Almost everything else is completely flat. I did point out the 20,000 in contracted services. There are a few other very minor, very minor changes, but the personal services increases for the, that Michelle has computed for us are in there, and that's, that's the majority of it, along with the change, and it's not a net bottom line change for the additional employee.
All right, all right, thank you.
I would point out, there you do see additional revenue at the Sportsplex, because our membership numbers are at a high, record high right now. But having additional members is requiring additional staff and expenses to support those. And if y'all recall, the Sportsplex, while it's accounted for in the general fund, is not drawing any property taxes, so as more revenue is generated, that revenue is used to support the facility, it'll either go, if we don't need it for operations, it will go to reserves to support future maintenance.
Yes, sir. Real quickly, for those folks in the audience who are at home that don't have access to the PowerPoint, Paul, could you just tell us, Paul? I wasn't sure if you could hear me.
I should not be controlling this computer with the finance.
If you could just tell the audience that doesn't have access to the PowerPoint, bottom line is, is your department gonna break even, make money, or lose money this year?
I have a summary sheet for that.
I think probably most people understand that the Leisure Services Department is not a for-profit business, it's not a profit-making entity. We provide free services to our citizens in terms of the parks, being able to access downtown facilities and facilities all over the city. So, I think I would make that comment in regard to whether it's a profit-making entity.
So, on paper, Councilman, this is on paper, I've done just a summary. So, and I'm gonna read just the gross numbers. $7,52,610 total expenses. $3,488,095 total revenues. Net expenses then would be $3,564,515. Chargebacks of $910,000, so that's a net general fund support of $2,654,515. And again, to repeat the percentage, that's 37 percent, I think it's 37.4 percent of actual general fund dollars. Cost, cost, property tax, yes, I'm sorry. The revenues from charges for services are about 50 percent, so. And if you look nationwide, or even within the state of Iowa, I think that compares favorably to almost every department you'll look at. So, specifically, running the recreation center, which we call the Sportsplex, typically is a 65 percent recovery. So, you know, in gross, I think we're doing pretty well, or net, I should say, our net cost, it's a lot of dollars, though I understand that, but the percentage is favorable.
Sure, and again, that was not directed at anything other than, you know, ultimately there's nothing free. My parents taught me that, that taxpayers are picking that up, and that's fine, and the taxpayers are very supportive of that, but I just wanna ask that bottom-line question. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Paul.
Paul, real quick, so, looking at those numbers, and I'm looking at these numbers, am I right, golf courses cost us about 80 grand apiece, and the Young Arena cost us about 60 grand.
I think that's close to being correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Paul. All right, that is all, sir. All right, next we have, I'm just playing, Clerk Finance. I just wanted to see the look on their faces, so, it's on you two.
Good morning. We'll go through the City Clerk Finance PowerPoint this morning. The City Clerk's Office and Finance Departments strive to provide outstanding financial and records management and quality customer service to the residents, employees, and elected officials of the city of Waterloo. I think what most citizens, when they call in, one of the first places that the phones will ring to is the City Clerk's Office, and so we kinda serve as that informational hub for residents of the city of Waterloo. And we also work very closely with other departments and our elected officials as well, to help, you know, plan out budgets, as you're seeing today, and then just answer questions, things like that, so. Organization, do you wanna talk about the Finance Department, how that's organized?
I can do that. So, Chief Financial Officer is my position, of course, and there, ideally, I should have four people that report to me, and we'll talk a little bit more about the duties that my staff has. Right now, I'm down half of my staff, I have two vacant positions. We do have one of them being filled on a part-time basis, it's, so it's not enough, we're doing the best we can right now with the staff we have.
City Clerk's Office, we have an administrative assistant, her name is Nancy Higbee, we have a deputy city clerk, who is Leanne Even, and then we have three Clerk Twos, who are Shelley Christman, Doug Anderson, and Cindy Young. Clerk's Office duties, we issue city business licenses and permits, maintain and safeguard city records and coordinate records requests. We prepare agendas, minutes, resolutions, and ordinances, process accounts receivable, banking, sales tax, and issue accounts payable checks. We oversee the city's cell phone and wireless device contracts. We bill for fire and rental unit inspections. We assess delinquents, sewer and garbage payments, manage city insurance and assist with lawsuits, and we also process all of the mail for the city departments. Couple of highlights for the Clerk's Office in 2016, we added a public records search to the city website. When you're on the front page of the city website, there's a space that says, "Search City Records." If you go to that link, you can access all of our minutes, ordinances, resolutions, and then the council packets that the council gets every week for the council meetings. All of those attachments are located on there, so really the citizens of Waterloo can see exactly what the city council sees. I know there was a question last week about travel requests, so all the itemized details about travel requests, things like that, that's all out there for the public to search and take a look at. And right now, I just did a search yesterday, and we have 22,764 pages of city records that are available for the public to take a look at whenever they want. And if you ever have troubles searching city records, you can always call the City Clerk's Office, and any one of us will be happy to help. We utilize Laserfish for all this scanning, et cetera, and in this last year, we've digitized 14,524 pages of city records. We processed 13,000 cash receipts, issued 2,648 pet licenses, 93 tobacco licenses, 210 liquor licenses, and 6,776 rental unit permits. And we also processed 85 insurance claims.
Okay, for the finance side of the department, we supervise all the accounting functions citywide for all city departments. We currently operate with about 26 funds, and those actually operate almost as a separate and distinct business. That's each a self-balancing set of accounts. So, we balance all the revenue streams that are received by the city, we have to make sure they are processed properly, because some revenue streams can only be used for certain types of expenses. We approved 24,000 invoices for payment in 2016, and we're responsible for overseeing the issuance of 10,000 checks to vendors. We work with payroll banking, we're responsible for the general oversight of that. There were 26 regular payrolls, but there's also a good 6 to 10 special supplemental payrolls that are processed throughout the year. We oversee the deposit of about 19,000 cash receipts, and that would not include things such as the receipts processed by Republic Parking that we still oversee and have to enter into the system, that's all done by Finance now. We review over 1,000 miscellaneous billing invoices that are done through our software and process about 2,000 journal entries a year. We also provide the accounting and financing functions for our self-insured health insurance, self-insured liability insurance, and the self-insured workers' compensation program. We're responsible for doing all the financial reporting. One of those things is our comprehensive annual financial statements, those are issued in accordance with the governmental accounting standards. We've received the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the last 13 years, which was a big change for the city, but I think it's important for our citizens, that's a nationwide award that shows. And that's only one of the reports we provide. You all know about the Annual Financial Report, Annual Street Report. There are lots of other things that my department pulls together. We also obviously coordinate preparation of the city budget for the fiscal seventeen year. That was a total of about a hundred and sixty-seven million dollar budget. We provide cash management and investment of city funds. We administer the capital improvement program, the budgeting, the accounting, and financing for all departments. We supervise, we assist with economic development project financing, and these are things, a lot of times, we are support and backup for other departments, where other departments, they have the lead, but we work with them to provide support they need. We supervise all the tax increment financing accounting. We coordinate debt issuance citywide. We've had several debt upgrades in my tenure with the city. Our current Moody's rating is a double A2. We also supervise project reporting, and we have a good four thousand projects that are captured in our accounting system. And we manage our capital asset accounting. We have four hundred and sixty-three million dollars in capital assets that are tracked for accounting purposes. We also provide some limited grant compliance reporting and administration. That's an area where we need to be doing more, but I need staff to do that. That's roughly the things we do.
Quick question. Are we gonna get the audit that was completed? I hope it's done.
It is done. I've just received it, so hopefully, it will be on Monday, or not this Monday's agenda, but the following Monday. I hope to have time to get that put in Novus for you.
Ms. Reitner, when, I think a couple of months ago, when at Human Resources that we were talking about filling that one open position, you mentioned that your department probably saved the city, I think you said hundreds of thousands of dollars, by helping other departments manage their budget or go through their numbers or something. I was just wondering if you could maybe talk about that a little bit, because, I mean, if that's identifiable, it seems like either way, I ought to be having a little further conversation with some of those department heads about what they're maybe not doing right, or if it's just purely a function of the magical mystical world of accounting that several of my kids are in. You know, that would then certainly justify that additional position, if we can say, gee, if this position with benefits and everything is eighty thousand dollars or whatever, but we can identify a couple hundred thousand dollars that would save the taxpayers, I mean, I think we'd get some support for that pretty quickly. So, could you just talk about that a little bit?
If I recall, the example I mentioned was, it actually was with a department with their billing. They had not updated the rates to some rates that were required by agreements with the clients, and yes, it was a large sum of money. Also, when I started here, our health insurance billing for retirees, the program wasn't functioning, and while people tried to keep lists and bill, the program wasn't able to track the amounts that were owed. And we, my department was able to get that record-keeping all straightened out, and it's in the software now, so that other departments are able to keep that up. And we do provide review of all that, and the audit firm has requested and recommended that you have us do that, because you're right, some of it is the mystical world of accounting, and some of it's, we all could benefit from a second set of eyes reviewing things. So, that is one of the things that our department tries to provide for everyone.
Thank you.
And annually, we do save probably hundreds of thousand dollars, almost annually, just in monitoring debt financing and refunding issues as available. So, there are definitely cash savings that come along with that outlay.
Thank you.
Michelle, I'd just like to compliment you on your department, because one number that jumped out at me was the twenty-six different business units, fire, all that. That's quite frankly, the exact same number that PGM business units are. And I can tell you that their staff is a lot higher than what your staff is, and so I appreciate that you're able to be a collaboration part of the city government in line financially with such limited staff.
Thank you. That's good to know.
Kelly.
Yes, Mr. Schmitt.
Yes. I know you've been in the position not a real long time, but prior to that, you were assistant. Are you seeing a trend through, again, technology of being able to do more online with the citizens, as far as a lot of the fines and licenses and various things like that, that your department is involved with? I mean, I've always equated your department, like, with the banks, and as we talk about how, you know, the bank lobbies are kinda ghost towns compared to what they were twenty years ago, because they're no longer the place where everybody needs to come every day, because they're doing so much online. I mean, are you seeing a trend, a continuing trend of that in your department, that people, like yourself, younger people are not coming in to buy the dog license like I do, but they're doing it online, or doing it in a more efficient manner?
I would say it's kinda split, and it's split a little bit along generational lines. We do still have significant foot traffic for people coming in, for getting their pet licenses. The deadline's coming up soon, so we'll have some significant foot traffic with that. But again, it is really split. We do have some people who want to do more online, but we still have a lot of people who want to come in, talk to the clerks, and get their permits issued on paper.
Thank you.
Kelly, can you cross-train any of your people to help Michelle with her accounting?
Do you maybe wanna answer that? I don't think most of Kelly's staff has the technical qualifications that would be ideal for my positions. One of the things that happens over time, as we've moved to software, you know, back in the eighties, the clerk's staff had many more people. You were spending a lot of time writing things down on paper, and I think it takes a different skill set. So, the employees that Kelly has now, their talents are for different things. They don't necessarily have accounting degrees, and we are not your frontline bookkeeping staff in the Finance Department. We are attempting to coordinate that, make sure it complies with regulations and accounting standards. So, we need a little bit different background, I think, for that, to do that effectively.
So, the answer's no?
I don't think it would be the most effective, efficient way to do it. Correct. Are we ready to talk about high-level numbers? So, a lot of citywide revenue is tracked in the Clerk Department budget on the revenue side. But our net expense to operate the Clerk Finance Department is about one point five million, and some of the significant changes for fiscal eighteen, of course, it's an election year, so we need to budget about sixty-two thousand to pay for elections. Let's see. Yeah, I forgot. We're on computers.
Where's that? What number's that?
That's account seventeen eighty, election costs, on page four or five.
Sixty-two thousand dollars?
Yes. You can see the two thousand sixteen election costs were fifty-eight thousand, one eighty. And Kelly can speak to, I think, that they've notified us of some possible increases.
Yeah. The county told me that the amount that they pay their precinct workers has increased, so they recommended budgeting about thirty thousand dollars for just the election, and since we do runoff elections, and all the precincts would have to go back for a mayor's runoff, I budgeted sixty-two thousand.
Does that amount fluctuate based upon how many people are up for election? Because I think this year, what do we have, four, is it four, three or four? Does that fluctuate with the amount, or is it pretty consistent?
It would, since we have a mayor's election this year. It's, all precincts have to report in. The cost was less, for example, for Ward One, but since it's a mayor's election this year, everybody has to.
Okay. Yeah, and at large, too, so that's the entire, entire city. Okay. Questions?
So, it confuses me, the bottom line.
It is net revenue to the general fund, and again, that's because several large sources of revenue come into the Clerk's Department that reduce the property tax askings for all departments, basically. So, it is net revenue, not net expense. And it is confusing. I agree.
Ms. Reitner, yeah, I don't know if now's the time to talk about it, or when we're in some of these other departments, but it seems like in the last couple of years, we've had, I don't know if I'd say change in philosophy, or how I'd describe it, but it appears, and I could be wrong, so if I am, feel free to point that out to me, but it appears like we're shifting and moving some responsibilities from a certain department to another department, and I guess the two that come to mind are animal control and maybe code enforcement or something. But I'm just wondering, is, I think we're moving some of those from a eight-ten funded department to a non-eight-ten funded department. Is that kind of a new concept, or is that something we could've been doing for the last several years, and is that something we should be possibly looking at doing more of? Because I, and I think several other council members are pretty committed to doing everything we can do to lower the levy rate, and ideally, do it without having an impact on the services. So, if there's ways of moving that around and making things a little bit more efficient and having an impact on that levy, I think we'd sure be taking, or interested in taking a look at that. So, could you maybe talk about that just a little bit?
I think that's why we recommended that particular. Now, code enforcement has been funded using sanitation fees for quite some time. What changed with code enforcement was the individual supervising that department. So, we are allocating some of his salary to be paid for with sanitation fees, because code enforcement is doing that. And we did decide to try funding animal control with sanitation fees, because it is related a little bit to sanitation functions of the city. Enterprise funds and those kinds of user fees can be a little more flexible to fund other city activities. When I first started, we're gonna go back in history here a little bit, but there were substantial transfers made from sewer revenue to support the general fund. But there was also a huge public outcry at that time, so we have stopped doing that. We are trying to charge them back for services provided by the Clerk Finance Office and other general fund-paid individuals. But we are trying to pretty much tie the expense to the revenue. So, we felt comfortable that animal control is a sanitation function of the city that improves sanitation citywide, and that's why we recommended moving that. We're always interested in discussing others as we can, and as we, we also have to balance those fees with the taxes. So, there's a process we go through when we make those decisions.
Okay. I mean, it just seems like, and I think maybe Councilman Powers has talked about this more than anybody, that, you know, we have some of the lowest rates for certain things, whether they're sewer or water, and I understand there's a limit to what can be cross-collateralized, for lack of a better term. But I do think, and again, I'm not an economic development person, but what I hear from the people that are, is, you know, a business looking to come into Waterloo doesn't look at what our water rates are, or what our golf rates are, or what some of these other rates are, that we're extremely competitive, but they do look at the levy rate. So, anything we could do to have an impact on that, and again, do it without having a big impact on the service, I mean, I think it'd be worthwhile to take a look at that.
But, you know, with regards to just the water rate, I don't know about leisure services, golf course prices, but with regard to the water rate, that is something that people are taking a look at. How much, how much capacity can we handle with our sewage system, what our water does cost, so those factors are factored in, and no can speak to that. I mean, we're negotiating or trying to work with a company now, and that company wants to know that, and that's a huge part of the overall package and competition with other communities as well. But, yeah, we, I don't know if it's a new philosophy with regards to the question, though, because I think, you know, with road use, you know, with some of the other fees to pay employees, but I guess it is taking a look at what is an allowable, allowable opportunity to kinda move some of those departments and take it easy on our levy rate.
And we certainly are looking at that all the time. The sewer fund, as you know, we've talked many times, actually, that we have a large amount of improvements that need to be made to the sewer system, and I anticipate sewer fees rising to handle sewer needs. So, that's the question of how much we want to jump that for other uses, because we do need to improve the sewer system to comply with the consent decree and to have safe wastewater treatment for our community.
Ms. Reitner, real quickly, I've kinda lost track of where that conversation ended up, but I know at one time, we were talking with Cedar Falls, I think maybe Evansdale, I'm not sure. Is that kinda all done, or are those conversations still going on specifically to sewer and water treatment?
Oh, that's a great question. That conversation is being handled right now. You know, one area we looked at, and I think we may have talked about or touched on, was the HR, which we discussed, but our sewer and treatment facilities, we're taking a look at that now and having those conversations. But if there's any, anything with some teeth, I'll make sure we get that back to you. But we also have to see if it's cost-efficient for the city as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Reitner.
Michelle, if you would, I met with you last, I met with you last year, as far as the levy rate, and you kind of explained it to me. Can you give us a brief explanation of how the levy rate is actually calculated, so that the people can understand?
That's a tall order. We'll try. So, yeah, but we have a bunch of other departments we hope to talk about. But, so the levy rate, taxes are, there's really three portions to the formula. There's total property values in the city. There's another portion that's really set by the state of Iowa, which is what portion of those property values is determined to be taxable, because it's not a hundred percent, surprisingly. And then the third piece is setting the levy rates. And you've heard people refer to the eight-ten today. That is a definition in state law that we're allowed to assess property taxes for general purposes, any legal purpose, eight dollars and ten cents per thousand of taxable value. Over time, the legislature has also allowed a number of other levies, which we use. Debt service levy to help repay bonded debt, employee benefits levy to help pay our payroll taxes, healthcare, those kinds of things. The library has a special voted-in levy to support the library. As you know, last year, we got a new levy that supporters of the Grouse Museum District voted for, so that we now support the Grouse Museum District with a tax levy. That's most of them, it's not all of them, but, so when we have certain expenses that qualify to be paid by one of those levies, we try to use that. While overall, we still need, are trying to keep our levy, I think it's fair to say, as low as possible, and still provide the services that the mayor and council are directing us to provide. Is that what you wanted? Okay.
Thirty seconds or less. All right. Any other questions?
Are we at two chargebacks yet?
We can be.
On chargebacks, real quickly, how do we determine how much we're gonna charge sanitation in the sewer fund? Is it per person, or is it just?
We have not. That's a general lump sum amount that kind of tries to take into account what we do for all the departments. I don't know that- I don't know that it's in our best interest to calculate actual hours each month and charge it back, because those fluctuations would make it very difficult to operate all the funds and keep everything balanced.
But it's a reasonable charge?
I believe it is a reasonable charge for the services being provided to those departments. I'm cautious about that. I want to charge them an appropriate amount. I don't want to charge them too little, and I don't really want to charge them too much. So we, that's why we do the levels we do.
Thanks. Michelle? I may have been out of the room there, but the question I had was, where are you at with, with filling those other two positions?
We're slowly working through the process. One position has been posted, and I'll be looking at resumes. One of the problems I have is this time of year is, my schedule's too intensive to spend a lot of time doing that hiring process. But once we get the budget pretty well set, I'll be spending more time on that.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor, a question.
You can, you can have, Councilman Jacobs asked a little bit earlier about audience participation. We will allow today, but there will not be any firing squad questions, not that you would ever do that. So just.
Just my question, maybe I should add.
Oh, I mean, you know, what, what do you want to know?
You can shoot it down or not.
Name and address, David Draper, 1045 West Fourth Street. Hat off. I guess I'm kind of offended by a statement that Ms. Whedon said, is that, well, these people don't have background to cross-train. If you don't push people's potential, you don't know what their potential is. So, and cross-training in all departments.
Our departments work in multiple areas, so, yeah, that, that is one that we will strike. That is our perspective on the ability for people to be able to handle the type of job and training that's needed. So, yeah, you're right, that was probably one we could have saved.
I'd like to comment on that a little bit, too. Within my department, all of my staff is cross-trained to effectively carry out the duties that each other person within the department does. So within the clerk's office, we're all effectively cross-trained.
It's not just the clerk's office, it's the entire city. I mean, I think we, we kind of take a look and just think that folks are just sitting around twiddling their thumbs, and they're not doing anything, or not helping out another department, or taking calls, or doing this, or doing that, or working on different parts within those offices. So, come on, let's, any other questions?
And my department's also cross-trained within the positions in finance. So there is cross-training that goes on.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right. Tom, any, if you have anyone, any other questions for Michelle and Kelly? We fine.
We dealt with the budget. A quick question with the budget. And you tried to explain this the other day. What is the line item for settlements?
In Activity 8900.
Sure. Under which li-
Activity 8900, so I'm going to try to find.
I think it's nine.
Okay. Mayor's helping. Page nine.
Oops.
Yep.
Eighty-nine hundred is nine.
Yeah.
That's it.
And, yes. So there's, at the bottom of that page, account number 1359, I believe, it says insurance claims. That would, that would be where all insurance claim, and a lawsuit settlement is considered an insurance claim. So that's where those are reported. You will not see on there settlements that are actually paid out by our insurance carrier. Those do not cross our books. We pay an insurance premium to, and you do see the premium expense on there, but if, if it's over the deductible amount, that's paid directly by the insurance carrier, and you will not see that in our books.
So we're budgeting for anticipating paying the deductible-
Correct.
-next, next year of $350,000.
That's correct.
And what's our deductible? $50,000?
It depends on the type of claim. It's a kind of complicated structure. I think, I think it's actually moved, it also depends on which year the actual incident occurred in. I think we've moved it up to $100,000 for most things. And then we have a maximum out of pocket of $250 for certain types, but then we also have to pay the attorney fees on top of that.
Where's the attorney's things in here, too?
Tom, I think that kind of is over, over the, the skill of this meeting, really. And I think it's a little too complicated to get into the weeds on that.
Can we, can we get Councilman Lynn some of, some of the information so he can have that? Okay. I guess, anyone else? All right. Thank you. We will have pizza here in about 15 minutes. Yeah. Your turn is coming up pretty soon. So we want to start with, Eric? We want to start with engineering here.
Eric Thorson, City Engineers Office. Our mission statement is to provide engineering and public improvements in the most economical manner. Some of the real general services that we do to maintain and improve the city's infrastructure, we provide design, coordination, inspection of public works projects, provide engineering support to other departments, process citizen concerns, plan short and long-range public works projects, and provide the various mandated departmental functions from the code. I want to take, just divert, just for a second, talk a little bit about public infrastructure. And I don't mean to imply that engineering is all of this. There's a lot of other departments that deal with infrastructure, too, including traffic operations and public works, and waste management, leisure services. But just to give you some idea of how much infrastructure we really have in this city, with our 64 square miles and over 68,000 in population, we've got 893 lane miles of streets, 566 miles of curb, 6,630 ADA ramps, 277 miles of sidewalk, 46.6 miles of recreational trails, 64 bridges and culverts, 20 miles of flood control levies, 360 miles of sanitary sewer mains, 7,424 sanitary manholes, 20 lift stations, 70 sanitary gate wells, about 400 miles of storm sewer mains, 5,800 storm manholes, 20 storm lift stations, 100 storm gate wells, and over 14,000 intakes. So there's a lot of public infrastructure within the city. We're sixth in population, probably, I think either third or fourth in area. So there's a lot to deal with, and it takes more than just engineering to deal with all that. But I just wanted to kind of put that out there so folks have a feel for the magnitude of what we have to deal with. This is probably a little small to read. Various duties and services that we provide, we record and investigate citizen concerns, maintain various departmental records. One of our important things for economic development is reviewing and improving subdivision and commercial developments. We issue for permits, issue permits done in the right-of-way, and insist in the enforcement of city ordinances and policies. We administer and maintain the stormwater fee collections. We prepare plans, specifications, and other required documents for construction of public works projects, including our street reconstruction program, our overlay program, bridge replacement and repair projects, ADA ramp compliance and sidewalk repair, flood control system projects, trail repair, and lots of other projects. We also provide engineering assistance for all their departments. A good example, Paul talked earlier this morning about several projects that leisure services did, and engineering was a part of that, doing some of the survey work and design, helping them bid some of those projects. And we certainly enjoy that, working with the other departments and help them with their projects. We also assist during flood emergencies. Again, that's a real group effort. Lots of folks in the city are involved in that, and so it takes everybody to really manage that system, but it really works. We've had a couple of major floods recently, including the one in September, and the system really does work. We assist waste management services with some of their EPA mandates now. Mostly, we're going to be helping them administer some contracts for various improvements that need to be made. We inspect the flood controls facilities with the Corps, and then get that information out to the various maintenance departments on things that they need to do to help maintain that system. We continue to develop our citywide stormwater and sanitary sewer maps and other things like that that we're required to have for our permits for the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. That's an NPDS terminology that you hear for stormwater management. And we're definitely moving towards GIS. Probably hear from Chris a little bit later about that. We provide surveying, drafting, and design assistance and inspection for local option projects, and we plan, coordinate, and administer contracts for maintenance repair of flood control facilities, such as riprap spraying, tree removal, levy repairs and improvements, gate well improvements. And we direct review and coordinate the work of consultants contracted by the city for public works improvements. Our engineering structure, have a city engineer myself, assistant city engineer, three associate engineers, a stormwater specialist, nine engineering technicians, three drafts persons, a clerk, and a secretary. And if you kind of want to see the tree or the organization, that's it. I know that's a little hard to read, so we use the other slide to at least give you the idea of the 20 employees that we have in our department. A big part of what we do is reviewing the subdivision and site plans that come into the city. This past year, we looked at preliminary plaits, final plaits, deeds, and construction plans for eight subdivisions. We also reviewed 45 site plans that came in for various projects around the city, and these are just a couple examples of that type of work, Ottoman Hills First Edition and the Kate O'Leary Hall Edition and Historic Renovation. So that keeps the staff real busy. Driveway and sidewalk permits are an important part of what we do within the right-of-way. In 2016, we issued 118 new driveway permits, 101 repair permits. Those resulted in 326 inspections. There were 25 driveway waivers submitted to the city council. And this is where someone is wanting to do something on a driveway that doesn't quite meet specifications, and it just kind of allows them to do that, but puts them on notice that if a sidewalk ever does come through that area, or it has to be modified, it'll be at their expense in their driveway. For sidewalks, we issued 61 permits for new sidewalks, 628 for repairs, and that resulted in 1,263 inspections. So really, the duties there are issue the permits and collect the fees, perform the inspections, and then we communicate specifications with contractors and property owners, and we're just complying with the city ordinance that we're required to do. Our excavation permits, again, work in the right-of-way. In 2016, we issued 538 permits, and that resulted in 943 inspections. Again, we're issuing the permits and collecting the fees, performing inspections, communicating the specifications with contractors and property owners, and meeting the ordinance that we have to comply with. And we are going to be proposing some increases in fees. Probably within the next few weeks, we'll have some information before council. Our fees, we've noticed, are a little bit low, and so we've done a lot of work on that, and we'll be presenting that a little later. Our stormwater management, which is the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit that we have, that resulted in 936 site inspections this past year, 448 dry weather inspections, which we're required to do. We had 116 stormwater pollution prevention plans and site plan reviews that were completed. There were 17 illicit discharges that were reported to the department that were investigated, and worked with the property owners or whoever the discharger is to clean that up and get that taken care of. And there were six community outreach and training events, and we are hoping to expand that a little bit. Phil is going to be working with the schools a lot more in the coming year to try to get some more outreach done in that area. Our pavement management system that we maintain, we maintain the classification, pavement distresses, and overall condition ratings for the streets within the cities. The database contains 431 centerline miles of city streets. That's actually divided into over 7,000 street segments. We do new street ratings every two years using an automated distress survey that's provided by the Iowa DOT, and that also includes some high-resolution right-of-way video log that we're just starting to get coming in and making some use of. Our drafting room also has some other responsibilities. We issued about 140 city addresses last year and 32 county addresses. This is one of the areas where we cooperate with the county, and we actually issue addresses in the unincorporated areas of the county. We've been doing that for quite a few years, and they reimburse us for that. We're also providing GIS and as-built, and building scans to all city departments. We have one of our drafting people, Ben Wagon, who's working real close with Chris and IT on GIS for the city. We also maintain the majority of all the digital geospatial data for the city. We provide sewer information to private contractors working in the right-of-way. We work on street naming and renaming. Various vacates and dedicates of right-of-way and easements are entered into the records, and we also enter encroachment agreements into the records. Our 2016 project highlights. Our street reconstruction program, we reconstructed 13 segments of streets in 2016. The various infrastructure improvements include, sometimes we work with the waterworks, and they replace their main and services during our project. We also televise all of the sanitary sewers through waste management, and then we can replace sanitary mains and services that are old or need replacement. Stormwater mains and intakes are reviewed, sometimes some of that's added if need be to provide better drainage. We put in subgrade footing drains, and we're now adding stubs to those so that the drain tile disconnects. When folks drain that out, they can connect into that footing tile system. The parking is reshaped, and we have topsoil and hydro seating. The various utility companies also do a lot of work sometimes when we're doing those reconstructions and upgrading their facilities. It's a good time for them to do that. And then because of the national requirements on sidewalks and ADA ramps, we do some of that work with those projects, and of course, we put in the curb and gutter and street Our asphalt overlay program, we overlaid 12 segments of streets in 2016. Due to some great work by the staff and the contractor, we did receive an award for one of the streets in that program from Iowa, or the Asphalt Paving Association from Iowa. Recent years, we've also been using a newer time-saving interlayer asphalt for street overlay to reduce reflective cracking. We're one of the few cities in the state that's starting to use that. It's been pretty successful. Our tenure sidewalk program, a great picture there of one of our techs checking out some sidewalk. It's pretty amazing what can happen to sidewalk when you only check them every 10 years, but there's some, be some pretty significant repairs required. The zone boundaries there, from the Zone 6 from last year, during that program, we inspected 1,550 properties. 997 of those properties required some repairs. 573 of the properties actually repaired their, or made their repairs privately through contractors or their own work. And then we still had 424 properties that were repaired by city contract, and then all those properties that were repaired in the city contract had the cost assessed to the property owners. We also do a city contract in that zone because of the federal mandates for ADA ramps and compliance. In that particular zone, last year, we did 177 ramps, were designed and constructed and modified to meet those new requirements. We always include some trail repairs in there if necessary, and so there was quite a bit of that done. Some other numbers there on the city sidewalk and ADA ramp repairs. You can see there's a lot of work that goes into that, and that's, again, done by a contractor with our inspection. One of our other important projects last year was the Sargent Road Trail Bridge. You can see the picture there of the before, that's the old railroad right-of-way, and those old railroad bridges are quickly becoming deteriorated and in an unsafe condition. So we replaced the dilapidated wooden trail bridge there with a multiple culvert and a new paved surface. The culvert will take virtually very little maintenance over time, so in the end, that'll be a real cost-saving measure. You also don't need the fences for protection and that sort of thing, because we have the nicer slopes now on the trail. So there are a couple more of those old bridges out along the Sargent Road Trail on Highway 63 that we'll have to keep our eyes on. As those become in lesser and lesser and more worse condition, we'll eventually have to replace those. But again, it was a good effort from the staff to design a multiple pipe culvert instead of a bridge that's cheaper and less to maintain. We have the Bread to Beer Project in downtown Waterloo, the single-speed brewing, and we worked with a consultant and other staff and their consultants to reconstruct the streets of West Second, Cedar, and West Third around that project. Also, new sidewalks and ADA ramps were put in, and there was a lot of streetscaping. There is a little bit work over on the library side of Third Street there that still has to be completed this spring. We generally have a couple of RISE projects, that's Revitalize Iowa Sound Economy every year. Those are grant-funded projects. The city has been successful in getting those projects almost every year. One of the more important ones this, this past year- One of the more important ones this past year was the third phase of the Midport Boulevard project that provided second access to the airport. That's been something that folks have been wanting and looking for, for a long time, so that there's another way to get in there if trains block the track, or block the road there. We also did the project over by VGM, the connection of Fitzway and Galactic Drives, and so there's some pictures there of that. We also have the Scholles Road Recreational Trail Extension from Highway 20 to Highway 21 to Isle of Creek Boulevard that added about 1.8 miles of paved recreational trail to the existing multi-use trails that were totaling about 44.8 miles before that through the city. So that's another important connection, and we'll be looking forward to trying to extend that more in the future. Flood protection is very important, as some of the other staff has indicated in previous presentations. Our levee system includes 20 miles of earthen levees and flood walls along the Cedar River, Blackhawk Creek, and Bowers Creek. This past year, through core requirements, we did a lot of tree clearing along Blackhawk Creek and the north side of that. And then we also did some channel cleaning on Sink Creek, and that was over seven acres of work that was completed last year, and we have more of that coming up. Of course, we had the flood of 2016. We've talked about that a little bit before. Engineering provided 24-hour levee monitoring during the flood emergency. We also assisted in the flood wall assembly and removal. We had staff out there helping other departments do that. We document the flood wall components and storage locations afterwards so that we can complete an inventory for parts requiring replacement. Each time you set those systems up, some of the seals and the anchors and things have to be replaced and renewed for the next event, so we continue to work on that. But again, that's a, it's a really good system that protects this city and was well worth the funds that were spent on it many years ago, but we do have to spend quite a bit of time reviewing and maintaining and upgrading as time goes on. Our goals for 2018, our main objective is to provide systematic, data-driven, efficient engineering using innovative technology to deliver a high-caliber service for the city and the citizens of Waterloo. Some of the future projects that we have on board right now, we're going to reconstruct 14 segments of streets, overlay four segments of streets, our sidewalk Zone 7 inspections. We'll be starting that up shortly, and we'll be administering those repairs. And again, the ADA ramp improvements that are required. The flood control system improvement project, there's a number of things that we need to continue to do to make that system better. Obviously, the flood of 2016, we had a couple of issues. Each time we have a flood, it seems like we have a couple of things that come up that we didn't know before, and so we'll be working on those to make some improvements to the system so that those types of issues won't happen with the next flood. Hopefully, it's a long timeout, and hopefully, none of us get to see it, but unlikely, most likely, it'll happen again at some point. We're also doing some contracts to repair flood sanitary gates along Blackhawk Creek and the Cedar River that are old and need to be upgraded. Sink Creek, we're working on a straightening project out there. We're currently just waiting for DNR permits so we can get that project out for bid. Again, we'll be clearing more trees along the levee system as required by the Corps. This is also our year to do bridge inspections with our consultants, so we'll be working on that. We'll be doing a few more bridge repairs. Four Street Bridge Canopy, hopefully, we'll be doing something with that one way or the other. Also, University Gate Avenue will be a huge project this year, working on preliminary and final design. And then, of course, Highway 63 reconstruction project through the city, the DOT has let that. Pre-construction was actually just this past week. They're indicating that the contract will probably be getting started towards the end of February, so we'll hope the weather holds out and they're able to do that. Finally, the engineering department is really three different budgets out of different funds. Road use tax comprises about 52% of our funding, local option sales tax 33%, and then stormwater fee about 15%. I think that's it for the slideshow. Overall, our basic budgets in each of the departments, we just pretty much, well, we did stay basically the same on the various line items except for personnel, so we have very minimal increases from about half a percent to about 1%. And that's due to the increases in personnel expenses. The other departmental line items, we kind of moved a few things around a little bit in those, kind of based on historical payments and activities in those to try to get the money where we think we'll spend it, but we did not ask for any increases in any of those lines. It's still the same as our previous budget, so just in general, that's our budget.
Mr. Thorson, just a couple of quick questions. Sink Creek, have you had any further collaboration with the county on that? You know, the citizens out there, I've talked to several of them since we did some of the work we've done out there, and they've noticed an improvement on things since we had some of that cleared out. But as I remember, the ultimate fix for that is a collaboration of city and county because part of that issue out there is in the city boundary, part of it's not. Last I heard, the county didn't seem real interested in talking about that. Has any of that changed?
I don't believe it has. Actually, Mayor Clark previously talked to the county about that, and they pretty much indicated they weren't interested in doing anything. That's why we're continuing to do what we can, at least within the city limits, to improve that situation out there. And of course, this next contract, we'd really like to get it underway. That will do some straightening out there, which will make the flow much better and smoother when we have the large events.
And then I also noticed on your, one of your slides, the stormwater fee stuff, it looked like roughly, if I remember correctly, roughly 15% of your budget is stormwater fee-related. Is that accurate?
Yes, on me. On the actual side for the staff is about 15%. Obviously, some of the funds go for other things, various projects, and I think street sweeping and some other things that are eligible to be paid for out of those funds.
So then, prior to having that stormwater fee a few years ago, was your staff not doing those things that that 15% is being, being applied to, or is that being used for something? You know what I'm saying? That, so let's say 100 bucks, so you're 15 bucks is for stormwater fee-related stuff. Prior to that, were they not doing any of that work? So that money just didn't exist, or has that money been moved to provide other functions?
If I understand the question correctly, what happened was, a few years back, we were required to have a stormwater permit that's issued by the Iowa DNR, and there's a number of permit activities that are included in that. And we were doing those in-house for as long as we could until we finally just couldn't get it all done anymore with the existing staff, and that's when that fee was implemented. And that provides funding to do those activities that are required by our permit, and then also some funding for some other stormwater-related activities in the city.
And then finally, and just again for the audience that doesn't have access to the budget, the amount of money that you spend with outside engineering firms, consultants, that kind of thing, is that pretty consistent year after year? Is that up or is that down, you know, with the various projects that are affiliated with your department?
I think it stays pretty consistent. We typically do the basic infrastructure projects like the street work and sidewalks, some storm sewers, sanitary sewer, some parking lot work, that kind of thing that we're staffed and able to do. Some of the more specialty work, when you start getting into bridge repairs, pump stations, any kind of structural activity, we typically hire consultants for that. We also use the consultants for some of the federally funded projects. Those have a lot more requirements for inspections and audits and paperwork, and our staff isn't as up to speed on that, so we typically hire consultants for that. So I think it stays relatively uniform over each year. We continue to do about the same amount of work in-house. Well, actually, we're probably doing a little bit more. We certainly have appreciated the council, councils in the past and present allowing us to have the best software and some of the latest survey equipment so that we can be as efficient as we can be. We're not asking for any upgrades on those right now. Those things will typically last us four or five years, but eventually, they'll become somewhat outdated, but we've been fortunate that council has funded in the past those upgrades so that we keep good equipment, and that really helps the staff be as efficient as they can. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Eric.
I've got a couple of questions. Waterworks is doing a lot of stuff with GPS. Are we coordinated with them so we're not duplicating what they're doing so we can use their GPS? And they can use our GPS, and you know, I'm trying to say, because they're doing a lot of the same engineering-type stuff we are.
Actually, actually, when we first got some of our survey equipment that was GPS-oriented, we were doing their hydrant locations for them and supplying that to them. They now have some of their own equipment and are doing some of that, but we continue to collaborate. And with the work that Chris and Ben in my office are doing towards a GIS system, a lot of that data will be available to all departments and other users, and so we continue to coordinate with them on that. We don't duplicate, I mean, they don't do storm sewers or sanitary for us, and we don't do water anymore because we're each doing our own, but...
For instance, one of the ideas I heard at one of the Waterworks Board meetings is the fire department could have a GPS unit tell them where every fire hydrant was.
Yes.
The other question I have, show me an example of one of these budgets where the consultant expense shows up.
What you're, what you have in front of you is their operating budgets. Most consultant expense is tied to a capital project and would not appear in these operating budgets. They would be in other places.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Just real quick, Eric, do we use graduate students from you and I for GIS and mapping and projects that they may be in their studies?
Actually, we are. Phil has some connections up there. He's our stormwater specialist, and we've been using some folks up there on some GIS work and some mapping for us, and we're going to kind of be looking into that a little bit more as time goes on. They have a very great program up there, and we're starting to kind of take advantage of that, and I would think there might be some advantages, maybe some other departments too. We're kind of getting our feet wet on that, but we'd like to continue that.
And just to go to Councilman Lynn's question a little bit earlier, one of the things when Chris first started, Chris Youngblood, we put together a technology infrastructure team, forgot the exact name, because we were finding out one area was using GIS, another one was using GIS, another one was using, but we kind of brought together that team to make sure that we coordinate and that we work together a little bit better in those areas. And so we just had, I don't know if it was a consultant or, was it a consultant or someone with GIS that actually came to even take a look at broader uses within the city and collaboration? So that was one of the big changes that we started immediately.
Mr., Mr.?
Eric, thank you very much for your staff. Your staff has been very responsive when I've gone to them and asked, been asking questions about a couple of different things based on people within Ward 3 that have concerns specifically about quiet zones. And I know that that topic is something that there's supposed to be a meeting, I think, this coming week regarding, but I think that would probably have to go through your department, and I'm glad that that conversation is happening, and people from Ward 3, and I believe Ward 4, would be very definitely affected by that, and hopefully, the future down the road's going to hold to have something like that implemented here in Waterloo. And the other thing is, I don't know what in your budget, concrete costs are, but I know there has been discussion and there's some things, there's some information going back and forth about, I refer to it as Korean concrete, and I'm just wondering if, if the best-case scenario came about, we would, the city would save money on that, given the longevity, durability that is said to exist within the Korean concrete material. Is that not?
I think that, you know, we just actually supplied some information to you and Tom this past week on that, and we could certainly get that to others if they'd like it. There are some county that's doing a little bit of work with some new concrete products, and so we had one of our staff members do some investigation on that, and right now, it appears that they're mostly using that for structural concrete and like bridges and things. They have tried a bridge deck, were fairly successful with that. One of the problems with that right at the moment is all the materials for those mixes are proprietary, and they have to come, a lot of it has to come from outside the country, from Canada and other places, so it's very expensive. In that data, there, this is Buchanan County, their cost of producing a cubic yard of concrete was between $2,000 and $3,000, and we're probably, on our projects, paying somewhere less than $100 a cubic yard. So there's a huge cost to it right now, but we think that over time, that will come down as more and more people use it, and there's definitely more trials going on, and so we're going to try to stay on top of that and watch that. And as soon as it's an application or that we can use, we'll certainly try to be in there. I mean, we like to be innovative, so we'll keep an eye on that, and it just right at the moment, it's very, very new and very costly because of the fact that the materials have to come from such a long distance and they're proprietary, so...
Can we, can we make sure that everyone gets that report that you should?
Sure.
As a follow-up, the, the longevity of our current concrete product that we use is what compared to the theoretical longevity of a Korean concrete type of product?
Well, you design for about a 40-year life, but that's also includes various types of maintenance activities along the way, so, and they're, they're saying in this data that they think this concrete will last from 100 to 200 years, I guess, because it is so new and there've only been a few trials, I think, you know, time will tell, I guess, if that's really correct. It does seem like a very good material, especially for structures. I don't know that we've found a whole lot yet. We're going to continue to look about using it in roads, but it definitely is something we need to stay on top of.
Thanks, thanks.
Are you, are you talking about Korean-made cement? Is that what you're talking about?
No, it's, it's actually some other additives and things and some different types of, you're using like a, some quartz aggregates and things that we don't have around here. And again, the formula is a proprietary formula, so you have to buy the materials through them, not like the sand or the water or the cement. We can use local materials of those, but there's some other products that are in there that are just right now very expensive to get a hold of.
So the mix is what you're buying from Korea?
Parts of the mix, yes.
Okay. And what's, tell me, what's a, what's a safe zone or a quiet zone? What's that?
A quiet zone is something you can do with, where you have railroad tracks and the constant horns on the trains. There's some things you can do to, I mean, to back up for a second, the trains are required to blow their horns at certain intervals, at intersections with the roads and things like that, and if you make some certain types of improvements, then by the laws, they don't have to sound their horns so much, and that's what makes it quiet then. And so there are some cities around, a few in Iowa, that have done some of that, and so we're looking into that to see what the procedures are and what the processes are and how you go about that. And some of what we've seen is sometimes you have to close some crossings. Obviously, if there's not a crossing there, they don't have to blow their horn. Sometimes if you can put up gated crossings so that people definitely have to stop, then there's just a number of different things you can do, and each situation is a little bit different, but we're going to be meeting with some federal railroad officials and state railroad officials and learning what the processes are and, and how you kind of go about that.
I know, and Cedar Rapids, they did that, and it cost them about $200,000 in intersection. We can't afford anything like that, can we, downtown?
Well, again, we've not done one before, so we're at least going to look into it and see what's involved and what the costs are, and then obviously, that would be a council decision if we were to move ahead with anything.
Yeah, right now, and, and some of our railroads are better at being more loud at 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock in the morning through some of our neighborhoods. You know, it's, it's a, it's not a good situation for, for some folks, and it's excessive. You can hear them for, I don't know, five minutes blowing the horns, so something to take it a look at, at least have conversation. Counsel, any other quick questions, and then we'll go to the gentleman.
Eric, I have a, just kind of bigger-picture question, and kind of getting back to looking at products that last longer and looking at our roads compared to what some other cities do. So I mean, we use primarily asphalt, and looking at, the question once again, if we could start looking at doing more concrete, if the cost isn't much different, is that something we could look at again to see if we could incorporate that into some of our planning?
Well, we're definitely looking at that, and we actually, you know, we do use asphalt in our overlays, but that's about the only product that's available for that at reasonable expense. In our, in our full-depth streets, we use both, but we do use quite a bit of concrete too. Both... concrete, too. Both of the RISE projects that were on here this past year were concrete, and university will probably be concrete. So we do use both products, and they both seem to be performing pretty equally across the city right now.
So what's the life expectancy of a concrete street, and what's the life expectancy of asphalt without having it go and overlay it right away? What's the difference in years?
Well, you design both products, you know, for that 40-year life, but to get there, you have maintenance for both products. I mean, neither product is without maintenance.
But obviously, with asphalt, you have to go and overlay it.
What do you do with concrete, too, though? I mean, most of our concrete streets are overlaid at some point.
So I think, I think the question is, what's the life expectancy? Do we have data that we can get to? Because we did a couple work sessions, I think, over what, last 10 years, maybe. And I don't think Councilman Jacobs was here at that time, so any information that we can get?
Yeah, we, we have some data from our payment management system that we've been working on. We have a number of streets of both types of materials that are of the same age, so.
If we can get him some information or if want to have a conversation, please, please do that.
Do that.
When we bid reconstruction, the contractor can do either one, can't he?
Yes.
All right, good sir.
John Sherwood, 1715 Robin Road. I'm trying to remember, I was privileged to set into that Korean concrete issue. One of the pluses that I saw was the, basically, the, they're working through some universities and some, some engineers and technicians have come over and actually worked with. They, they furnish the material for free because they're experimenting. In some areas, they need places to, to try things different. I think it would be a great benefit to City Waterloo to follow up and see if we could, we could get some more information and see what's, what's out there. They, all they had to do, I basically, was furnish the place to, to mix it and use it. Now, there's a lot more issues because this was a bridge deal, but like some of our trail bridges, they were using railroad cars, not the, the ones, you know, the flat cars and stuff. There's various ways that they use those. They last forever. They're available as a surplus. A lot of different things that, that maybe we should be looking at. But the biggest thing was that they furnish the technology and the people, and they really want to see what they can get going in the world, not just in this, you know, small area. So, but the cost, basically, to Buchanan County is, was very nil. So, thank you.
So there's places in Iowa that's currently, currently doing this?
Okay.
Okay, okay, all right.
I guess if I could add to that real quick. I, I think that we've got some shovel-ready projects going on. The president, current administration has indicated that infrastructure, bridges, those types of things are certainly going to be on his priority list. So I would think that if we look at some of our shovel-ready projects, that we could go to the administration, or at least the DOT, both state and federal, and inter cog, and create that conversation about finding grant opportunities to, to do a small project here in Waterloo. So I would just encourage that we keep moving forward on that.
And that's a, that's a good point, too, because staff have already been meeting, too, to make sure that anything that comes down the pike will be ready to go. I think there's a certain percentage that you have to have ready to go or to be able to move forward. So we've been meeting, trying to make sure we're ahead of the curve. Any, any other questions for Eric? All right, thank you. Let's take about a, do we have to?
Motion to recess for...
I'm just thinking, folks can grab some food and then sit back down.
For 15 minutes?
15 minutes. Motion's been made. All in favor?
Aye.
Wait, wait. Someone down there, second, second, Mr. Jacobs, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned for 15 minutes. We had a motion to re, we had a motion to reconvene in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Just for those that may not have saw us a little bit earlier, Councilman Walper is a little bit under the weather today, and Councilman Schmidt was here a little bit earlier, but had to leave for a prior obligation out of town. So we are ready to go. We've already reviewed leisure services, the clerk finance office engineering, and we now have planning.
Can everyone hear me okay? I'll try to, mic, no, I'm just kidding. Community Planning Development Department, our mission statement is to actively promote the development and redevelopment of the city of Waterloo in order to provide the most conducive environment to live, work, pursue business opportunity, play and raise a family while remaining cognizant of the fiscal, environmental, and sociological impacts of that development. Am I moving it forward or am you? This one? So basically, that's a lot to do. The proverbial jack-of-all-trades, you'll see that we are working to do a lot of things with a lot of different departments and partnerships to make things happen in the city of Waterloo. Staff, we have the Community Planning and Development Director, we have a city planner, an administrative secretary, and then we have five planner positions that are all union positions as of last, a couple of years ago. Three of those are planner twos, including the Economic Development Specialist position, and the other two are planner ones. What goes on in the planning department on a daily basis is they're, they're looking at permits at the permit counter for residential, commercial, and industrial site plans. They're taking floodplain calls, rezoning calls, questions from the public. On a weekly basis, we're preparing council items for approval, looking at alcohol licenses for the new overlay districts, applications for commissions that'll come in the next part, Cura and CLURA applications, and then we also do work for the county. So we're doing Board of Supervisors items for approval on their weekly basis. On a monthly basis, we provide staff to the Planning Commission, to the Board of Adjustment, to the Technical Review Committee, the Historic Preservation Commission, the Highway 218 Design Review Board. Again, by contract, by Blackhawk County Planning Commission, the Blackhawk County Board of Adjustment, and the Blackhawk County Technical Review Committee. We also have staff attend the Main Street Design Review, Main Street Economic Restructuring Committee, Main Street Board of Directors, the Edit Meeting, which is the Economic Development Infrastructure Team for the city, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is the organization that spends the federal road dollars working with the other urban areas of the county, the Waterloo Development Corporation for Downtown Development, and the Complete Streets Committee. We also staff the Dilapidated Housing Committee, and recently, we become a participant in the Good Food Network. Planning and zoning, so for the Planning and Zoning Commission, we're responsible for processing applications from the public and from businesses for rezoning requests, ordinance revisions, site plan amendments, platting and development of land, the vacate and dedicates of streets, easements and right-of-way portions, special uses, or special permits for some uses. As a part of that is also the comprehensive plan updates and future land use maps, floodplain administration to stay in compliance with FEMA standards, design review for the 218 board, Main Street requests for planned district areas, appeals, and variance requests. Again, the City of Waterloo is hired by contract and bills per hour spent for county work. Through this partnership, the professional staff of the City of Waterloo is able to help Blackhawk County for appropriate review and land use in the unincorporated areas of the county. This includes the Blackhawk County Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment, and Technical Review for all the agendas, mailings, and staff reports. The City of Waterloo has a Historic Preservation Commission that allows us to maintain the city as a certified local government status, which gives us points on state grants. We also work for the review of demolition rehabilitation of historically eligible homes, districts, local districts, National Register listing for assistance for projects using state and federal tax credits. We also attend the Metropolitan Planning or the MPO Commission, looking at the analysis and creation of data for that for new road construction, improvements to existing roadways and corridors, trail acquisition, development and planning. This has brought forth such projects such as Highway 63, Kimball Avenue, the Ainsborough Interchange, and the 18th Street Bridge as examples. The staff look to tie the transportation funds to economic development with programs such as the State of Iowa RISE program, the rail RISE programs, and other grants that are available at times. Overall data of city growth and development tie together transportation, infrastructure, and land use planning for the city's capital improvements program, the city's comprehensive plan and future land use map, as well as overall decision-making for approval of new development areas for residential, commercial, and industrial development. This includes looking at census data and the use of, we have 494 what's called TAS zones or Transportation Analysis Zones that looks at certain areas based on transportation needs and how they're growing in terms of population and employment and daily traffic patterns. As a part of our duties to help Main Street, we attend and coordinate information with the Main Street Design Review Board for compliance with the zoning ordinance. We work with their Economic Restructuring Board for bringing new businesses to downtown and working with federal, state, and local incentives for business development, upper-floor housing, and downtown improvements. Assistance to the Main Street Board of Directions and Executive Committee for operation of downtown Waterloo for compliance with the state Main Street program. Our department's also responsible for property management, which requires review, acquisition, and disposition of land for the city of Waterloo for all functions, including acquisition for easements for infrastructure such as sewer, traffic lights, traffic improvements, et cetera, economic development of land for future open, for future development, open spaces, trail development, 657A properties for acquisition and elimination of blight, rehabilitation, demolition, and redevelopment. The Capital Improvements Program is a five-year plan updated annually to reevaluate projects for priorities, emergencies, mandates, and to help growing areas of the community. This involves us working with the majority of the city departments for requests for their needs for infrastructure, capital needs, capital equipment, and then work with finance in the mayor's office to break out the projects into the five-year plan for accomplishment. Information's then presented to the city council for their information, their review and comment, potential priorities, and approval. The CIP, again, ties back into the continued development, growth, and land use of the city of Waterloo and its relationship of infrastructure and ordinances to the comprehensive plan and future land use map. Economic Development, this is the number-one goal stated by the city council on their agendas to, to support economic development efforts that attract, retain, and create quality jobs resulting in a diverse economic base and increased population. Planning staff look, look to, work to put together programs, incentives, areas for development, both public and private, that work to attract new housing starts, new commercial starts, and new industrial starts. We also work to create, draft, and organize ordinances, both locally, statewide, and federally, that work to help foster infill development, expansion of existing businesses, and the utilization of older sites, brownfield and grayfield sites, as well as the reuse of vacant buildings. For infill development, we have worked extensively with the Waterloo schools to not only help them provide quality educational building sites and locations throughout the community, but to do so on existing sites or new sites when more appropriate. This partnership has resulted in savings with the new location of the Bus Barn, excellent infill development for housing sites with the Habitat Village, the former Roosevelt School, the former Francis Grouse School, and more. And there will be some commercial sites coming up. For housing, we have adopted the CLURA to partner with the Cura for new incentives for housing development in Waterloo. As shown below on the chart, the number of homes built per year in Waterloo has almost doubled after adoption of the CLURA. This incentive has also attracted more housing and land developers to create subdivisions in the city of Waterloo, which work to create a larger tax base, more population, more employees for business attraction, schoolchildren, et cetera. For infill housing, the Cura continues to provide incentives for existing neighborhood investment and redevelopment. The Cura is eligible for residential, commercial, and industrial on the inner portions of the community, so it really helps to create potential redevelopment opportunities for all types of development. The city's recent partnership with Hawkeye Community College, utilization of the State of Iowa Workforce Housing Program, which replaced the Enterprise Zone, and continued use of 657A to eliminate blight, will all become important factors in the revitalization, growth, and recreation of parts of Waterloo. For commercial and industrial development, we have continued to grow the city's private, business, commercial, and industrial parks to serve the citizenry and visitors of Waterloo in all areas of the community. Steps to continue the growth include financial planning, both short-term and long-term, for infrastructure provision, lot creation, and business attraction through the use of tax increment finance provisions. The combination of Logan and Midport will work to create, help recreate Logan Plaza while still allowing the city to grow the industrial land to strengthen the employment near the Waterloo Regional Airport. The acquisition of underutilized sites in downtown Waterloo have turned sites into productive, symbiotic, and growing in tax base residence and employee-producing sites to aid in the overall mixed use and density desired in a downtown setting. As an example, the former Grand Hotel site was valued at 1.1 million and will soon have over 15 million in tax base, over 120 new residential units, and employees at a commercial space developed on the site. The City of Waterloo has worked to help businesses grow and expand while helping to grow future development opportunities in the community. As an example, the Kriterian and Accurate Gear project up on Airline Highway helped both companies expand, redeveloped a vacant building, and added employees to both businesses and gaining land for the city for more industrial development in that area. The city has worked to acquire land for business attraction and provide infrastructure to that land. The L&amp;H Land for South Waterloo Business Park is a state-certified site. The land on Wagner Road, which has three businesses currently looking at it. The land in the Northeast Site, we're redeveloping, also has three businesses currently looking at it. The city has also worked to partner with private land developers to create more business opportunities. By partnering with private developers, more can be accomplished and paid with future development taxes, saving the city bonding funds, capacity, and debt in the short term. The Country Club Business Park was developed by Cardinal, and only rebates were given. The Deer Creek was developed by Harold Youngblood with a partnership for infrastructure repayment after construction of the infrastructure by Deer Creek. Staff has now dedicated a staff person to work solely towards economic development, partnering with Buckston, the Greater Cedar Valley Alliance, Main Street, and utilizing existing databases, existing businesses, and projects moving ahead and attracting others. As I always say, construction brings more construction. Staff has recently contacted over 24 new retail businesses, is working with over 20 new commercial and office prospects, and has eight large industrial leads. The City of Waterloo continues to use a variety of funding sources to help redevelop brownfield and grayfield sites. Through our efforts, we have utilized over 50,000 last year in DNR brownfield grants. We previously used 400,000 in EPA assessment grants to help identify, categorize, and make shovel-ready many smaller brownfield sites. We just received that EPA assessment grant again, so we'll have that in this next coming year. And we've redeveloped a lot of brownfield site cleanups and redevelopments. Some of these projects are the new Public Works Building on the former Construction Machinery Company site, the new Tech Works Campus emerging from the former Deere and Company campus, continued efforts towards demolition and redevelopment of the former Chamberlain Manufacturing Company site, approval for redevelopment of the former Grand Hotel site included some brownfields cleanup and assessment, and efforts towards a Phase III portion over there will involve more, the single-speed redevelopment of the former Wonder Bread site, and many smaller sites throughout the community. This past year, to glance, we saw our second highest total in permit valuation at 127.51 million. We saw our second highest total in two, in total residential unit construction at 205 new units. We had our highest total in new single-family homes at 99 homes. We had our highest one-month total in single-family homes with 25 homes in March. We saw the redevelopment of Logan Plaza started. We saw major roadway connections with Kimball finished, Geraldine Road finished, bringing over 8 million in new industrial development, Midport Boulevard connection made, the Fitzway Galactic Connection made, which is the city's first roundabout. Conagra opened up their David Sunflower Seed Expansion Project. KWWL is redeveloping their historic office building to continue to call Waterloo their home. Multiple residential projects are underway in downtown Waterloo. Multiple new subdivisions are being built, filled, and planned, as examples Audubon, Hummingbird, and the Kiefer subdivisions. The Martin Road area is exploding with multiple projects. Highway 20 continues to see new projects with Green Acres opening up, more land out there with continued infrastructure. Tech Works Campus redevelopment's underway, and the Crossroads area has seen several new restaurants and stores. Looking ahead, our goals: readoption of the CLURA for a five- or a 10-year period, continue development with permit values at or above the 100 million mark, continue to develop or redevelop sites for new residential, commercial, and industrial opportunities, continue to make needed transportation planning and improvements in areas such as the Laporte Road Corridor, University Avenue, and the Northeast Bypass Area, continue to review zoning and other ordinances with nationwide trends and standards for development friendly regulations, continue to work towards quality-of-life improvements for residents to attract new businesses and employees to the area, such as trails, water features, and recreational amenities, develop a property optimization review of city lands to find the highest and best use, lower maintenance costs, and create new tax base and development opportunities, continue to finish the goals of the Riverfront Renaissance Project to bring private investment to the Riverfront, Upper Plaza, and Housing and Marina are two examples of that. That is the end of the slideshow. Any questions?
So when we take a look at, you don't have your numbers, do you?
What do I want?
Your numbers. One of the things we did last year was to restructure somewhat that department to hopefully... hopefully ease a little bit of what's on the general fund, but can you fill us in? We know the economic development specialist position is at full strength right now, right? Can you talk about what that position does and contacts or any of those things?
Sure. So going from last year, or the year before to last year, and then moving into this year, we basically turned a part-time position into a full-time position with no increase in the general fund with that by paying for it with the TIF. The TIF hours are tracked by activities, so we're working in the TIF districts to pay it out of those funds. So we're at a full staff now. The economic development specialist is primarily working with a number of different things. She works with Buxton to look at, they're now analyzing data and putting together data to find matches for retail companies that match this area, and then we send contacts out to them. I know that we sent out numerous contacts, over 20 there, and we received a number of feedback back. Some have said no, some have said yes, some have said no at this time, but the ones that have said yes, we're setting up meetings with them, they're conducting site visits, and we're sending out more data. She continues to work with the Greater Cedar Valley Alliance staff. They regularly attend conferences on manufacturing and other targeted industries for us to gain leads there so that we can go ahead and provide information on our water capacity, sewer capacity, lot creation, and other employment data. She works specifically on achieving, we're one of the State of Iowa Certified List for a business park site at the South Waterloo Business Park. That actually took a large criteria of information in terms of soil testing, infrastructure provision, and all this historical data, so that was a lot of work that we just achieved that recently and received some recognition from the governor on that. And then, of course, we're working with contacting our existing businesses' visitation program, talking to existing businesses about what their plans are, how we can help, if there's any concerns that they have with roadway designs or turning lanes or something like that. Again, just to better serve them better so that they want to continue to expand and grow here.
All right. Any questions right now before he talks about any types of numbers?
I don't know if you want me to talk about the property optimization since Paul brought it up a little bit earlier.
Sure.
Earlier, I guess it was late last year now, the Target company actually came in and went through a pretty good analysis of what they're doing as a company. Target as a whole is doing what they call property optimization, where they look at each of their target sites, where they have stores, superstores, and they basically look at what areas of their parking lots are being utilized on a daily basis at Christmas time, busy times, less busy times, and looking at if they have the ability to sell off any portions of that for other retail development, friendly development that would bring more traffic to their sites. So that got us thinking, we'll be working specifically with Paul and another departments, but trying to analyze more specifically each city-owned parcel, whether that's a park or just an open space, and working with the different departments to see how much of that land is actually being utilized. Let's, as an example, let's say we have an eight-acre park site, and after analysis, maybe only four acres are generally being used by the general public on a regular basis. We'd meet with Paul's staff, we'd meet with the engineering staff, see if there's any drainage purposes or something like that, why it's larger, but essentially looking at what may make sense from an infrastructure and land use sense to see if there's any buildable sites off there. What we think this will achieve is, number one, that will give us some more development sites for housing or some other type of use in the city of Waterloo. Number two, it'll help to lessen that maintenance budget of Paul's staff of having to go out and mow and maintain the grass. So we think there's a couple of benefits that we can do by going through this process and analyzing sites at a more detailed level, and again, calling it property optimization.
Mr. Mayor, Noel, on your thing up there. You have the economic development specialist working a third of her time on planning. I thought you said she was full-time economic development.
Bring it back to this one. He's looking at this one, right? Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I thought that's what he was saying.
I'm sorry, what was your question?
We have it, oh, go ahead.
The economic development planner, too, you have her working a third of her time in planning and zoning, according to what's up there. I would suggest you move her full-time to economic development. Just a suggestion.
Point seven. We have a point seven, we can definitely look at that. I don't remember exactly why we did it that way to begin with, looking at the TIF district available funds and all that, but...
And maybe that's a funding source rather than a working.
And, you know, there's a lot of activities, you know, if you're helping a project, let's say we get a new business that wants to come in and they want to go out in the South Waterloo Business Park as an example, it's definitely an economic development activity. At the same time, part of that activity will be making sure that they get through the site plan amendment process and make sure that they have it properly designed and all that. So, you know, if some of it were funded back to the general fund or something versus economic development, it would definitely be an eligible activity, but I'll have to go back and look at why we did the point seven.
And the whole city is not in a TIF district, so this is really talking more about funding than it is about working on development projects because she's probably working on development projects citywide, but they're not all necessarily in a TIF district.
And then on your budget, where in the budget would I find the money we pay to all the other partners in economic development, you know, downtown and Main Street and the Alliance and all the other players? Is there a place where it shows what it costs us to employ them?
Those would not be in these operating budgets. They're, most of it would be in the TIF budget.
In what budget?
Out of the TIF.
The TIF fund.
So Greater Cedar Valley Alliance has paid out of the industrial TIF areas, since they're working on industrial development. Buxton would be paid out of the areas that have retail space in them, since they're working on retail development.
Could you get me the figures from last year for what we paid all those people?
Yes.
All the economic development partners?
Sure.
Noel, I had just a follow-up question. In general terms, you know, off the top of your head type thing, economic development position, I know you mentioned she's working with the Alliance, but, you know, we already pay the Alliance to work with us. I know you mentioned she's working with Buxton, that's more retail, but is she really reaching out to prospective employers that are going to bring value-added jobs or livable wage jobs? And if so, then kind of like, can you break that down? What is she going, what's her means of attack, or generally, what's the plan to do that?
Yes, and obviously, you know, when we moved her to that position, we hired two planner ones. We had a vacant position and the half position, and part of her job has been getting them up to speed to take over the duties and all that, so it's just kind of getting to that point. But that's definitely the goal as we continue to move forward, is to look at reaching out to, through some of these conferences and some of the training to find these. But, you know, you'd be surprised, too, I think we had put together some data on, as an example, the Loves Travel project. You know, you would generally think of that more as a retail type of a project, and what we had looked at, based on information we could gather from Loves Travel's other locations and talking with the company, you know, they're going to be creating 50 new employees there. The managers will be paid somewhere between $1,490 and $2885 per hour, depending upon experience. Other management staff will be paid $1,135 to $2274 per hour. The food workers at $1,167 to $1,875 per hour, and then there's other workers, they say, at $8 to $923 per hour. We looked at what the livable wage would be declared at in Waterloo, and really, any wage above $10.08 per hour would be above the median household income and be considered a livable wage. So the majority of those jobs are even at a livable, above a livable wage portion as you'd categorize it for the area, even though that one would be considered more of a retail-type operation. So I, but that's something we're definitely going to start tracking more. I know the council has asked questions about job creation and wages and all that, and so we'll be gathering that information for projects. Thank you.
And to add to Councilman Jacob's question, you know, I got an in-depth view of how some of this works. We had a prospect that called in and came in through the Greater Cedar Valley Alliance because it was on a, it came through, through the state, the state contacted, Greater Cedar Valley Alliance, Greater Cedar Valley Alliance contacted Noel's office. Adrian worked very closely with Lisa Skubel on this project to get all the data, to set up the meetings, to make sure we had everything that we needed to have. So when that visit came, they were there. So that's one, that's one level. When we talk about the state certification, as we know, we've been trying to do that for a couple years, so preparing of information, getting all that data and stuff ready for that was a direct result of Lisa, the chamber, and Adrian working together. Also, when we take a look at Buxton, Noel had indicated that we, there was about 20 leads that we wanted to take a look at, but for some of those leads, that actually is Adrian's, part of Adrian's responsibility. Also, when we take a look at, now, and that's considered like, I wouldn't say it was cold calling, because as a practice, I don't necessarily know if that's the most best way of outreach, but she's also going to be the contact for that. She's also going to be reaching out to some of our smaller business, asking some of the questions, because you and I have had questions over the past year, like taking a more aggressive approach to reaching out to find out exactly how many businesses were contacted, whether it was local businesses, whether it was outreach calls, but we'll be tracking all of those things. And I know you, and me too, had some questions about our strategic approach to doing that. And that's just a couple different areas, but it's being absolutely 100% aggressive, which I know is what you want to see and I want to see as well.
Perfect. Mr. Mayor. Noel, I appreciate you saying that about tracking, that thing you handed out to us a few weeks ago from Cedar Rapids that showed on every job and every project, the number of verifiable jobs, the capital investment of the company, you know, those two or three metrics, it would just be great for the council to see that when we approve development agreements. So we know, and the public knows, that we're getting something for our investment.
Mr. Amis.
Noel, one of the things that, that information that you did send out, one of my concerns was, is when you talked about the livable wage aspect of things, you put it as the individual person. Is it feasible or possible to put in there a livable wage for a family also in there? Because I know that that is a lot higher. So just for informational purposes, I think that that would be important to include that in there also.
Yeah, we can definitely break that out, you know, the census information, you'll break it out by, and even the number of people in a family for the average median income and all that, so we can break out in different categories.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Noel, Vanderwall, Buxton, and Greater Cedar Valley are all paid out at TIF then?
That's correct.
Okay. And I was wondering, is there any line item for historic preservation? Per se?
Nothing specific, other than that our staff provides, you know, all the mailings, information, inventory of data for the historic preservation. So I mean, you know, a lot of the needs of the historic preservation in terms of, as a operating commissioner, contained within our budget. Specific to the Historic Preservation Commission, if they wanted to actually, let's say, as an example, take a project up to fix up a house, that would be something more appropriately put into the capital improvements program as a specific project to say, hey, we're going to categorize $20,000 in funds for the renovation of the Dunsmore House or something like that.
Well, I know that I would like to see, in the future, that it be considered to be actually a line item put in the budget. Noel.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the things we need to see, I can't remember the gentleman I had a conversation with. Do you remember Pat? Was it, was it Otis?
Ed.
I had a conversation with him, what, two months ago maybe, and one of the, one of the questions, or one of the parts of the conversation was coming up with an overall strategic plan or strategic goal to where they want to be at in the next, what, one, two, five years, kind of taking a look at those areas. And that was with the hopes that if they did come back, we'd know in lockstep what they need the information for. And it's kind of like our CIP plan. You know, we know we're going to buy five trucks, we're going to do this in this area. We just need to see, see what they want to do with some money before we just say, you know, here's 20,000, but it'll be nice. And I know they're working on the plan because you attended the meeting, I believe, as well. So we're looking forward to seeing that. Got some good energy going right now.
Thanks. Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question.
Into the microphone, sir.
A quick question, Noel. I'm just thinking about connectivity of staffs. So is Adrian reaching out to Iowa Workforce Development, Iowa Economic Development, Cedar Valley you talked about? So is there kind of conference calls going on so that we know what's going on statewide that Iowa Economic Development, Iowa Workforce isn't possibly targeting another community where we may be missing out? So do we have weekly calls or monthly calls or bimonthly calls, or how do we do that?
I don't know if there's anything planned, but generally, there's very good correspondence between all the entities anytime something happens. There's internal email systems that the state will send out as examples to all the economic development professionals when there's something going forward before the legislature or something like that. Another entity we work with quite a bit is the Blackout County Economic Development, which has a loan funding source for helping small business development. We're regularly talking to them as well about projects. They have a new market tax credit program as well. So again, we're always kind of touching base with a lot of them. We could probably do a better job talking to Iowa Workforce Development, so that's a very good point, so we'll definitely add that to the list.
Yeah, and, you know, one of the, one of the good things that happened that was mentioned earlier was with regards to the site certification, because that is a direct line of communication for anyone nationally, statewide, that's looking for one of the 15, 16 sites. That information comes directly, directly to us. So that's a very good coordinated effort. But one area that we're also looking for, and I think, I can't remember if it was you, Councilman Powers, or someone that talked about shovel-ready sites, so in the future, we need to put ourselves in an even better position to have some of that available for people. Any other questions for Noel? Yes, sir. Do we need to censor this question?
He's got pizza, he's happy.
Dave Driver, 345 West Fourth Street. We're talking about tracking and all that here. How much tracking is done when we do a CURA or a CLURA tax abatement or rebate or whatever as to the value of that project and how much we're giving them back in tax rebates? A lot of times I've heard, especially on a TIF, that we give the guy tax abatements, and it equals the purchase value of the property or maybe even some extra money to build it. To me, if you are the developer, you should have money in it more than the city does. And I think it was, I'm not sure whether Mason City or the town up northwest that some time ago turned a TIF thing down because they started researching and found out the city was going to have more money in the property or in the development than the guy that was going to own it and make the money off of it. So are we doing any tracking to find out if we're giving people more money than the project is worth, or at least they end up with no value in it? And I'd like that, but I'm not in a CURA or CLURA. I put $50,000 in my property when moved a ton, and I didn't qualify for a dime. Thank you.
So tracking, tracking of value, long-range tracking of projects.
I'll start with the CURA and the CLURA. So we track the amount of investment that goes back, that goes into it initially, and there is a minimum percentage that you have to increase the value by to be eligible for it, which is determined by the county assessor's office. Just to give you some ideas, so back in fiscal year 14 in the CURA, we had 11.36 million invested in private investment. In '15, we had 7.85 million. In '16, we had 13.45 million. And in '17, as of halfway mark, we're at 13.45 million already. So we're seeing a lot more investment in the CURA. Now, that is the investment by the, by the building permits that they're turning in for what they're doing out there. So that's what we're tracking on there. We don't generally go back in and track to see exactly how much a house received in benefits, because it's an abatement program, so that's all handled... because it's an abatement program, so that's all handled on by the county. We'd have to go back and probably figure every year the rollback percentage and the value of their house in case it changed or something, to actually track what they receive. But we do track that, how much value is going back into there. Same thing for the CLURA. In fiscal year 14, we had 13.21 million in new private investment. That was 55 homes. In '15, we had 69 homes at 15.07 million. And in fiscal year '16, we had 42 new homes at 8.84 million. And so far in '17, we have 68 homes at 15.83 million filed for the CLURA. So again, we're tracking how much investment's going in those. We're not really tracking the abatement backside of it. You know, three years at 100%, I guess, you know, the question would be, for the CLURA, how many years out would you want to figure out how much they put into it to how much they got back? If we figured out a 10-year return, the city's going to make quite a bit of funds based on what they put into it and what it's paid for. In the TIF, of course, we do track exactly what people get back in rebates in our annual TIF report, so we're fully aware of what those projects are at.
Mr. Jacobs.
Noel, I had a quick question, just something to think about possibly, as, just like, from the customer's point of view, trying to get permits and things for projects, trying to make it really customer-friendly and that. Are we looking at, down the road, getting any kind of online program to take out permits for projects as far as the contractors? Like, as far as like Cedar Rapids has that and other areas?
You're, you're getting into the next presentation.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay. But, yes. We do take permits by email now, when possible. So it depends on the difficulty of the permit, I guess, you know, if it's, if it's an addition to a house that they can easily put on a permit or something like that, we can do online permits. If it's a plumbing permit or something like that, again, a lot of times, we can do it online. We definitely have worked to improve to become easier access and public-friendly. You know, when you get into a more detailed new construction or something like that, they're going to have to come in with the setup plans and all that. But they could still pay the permits online and things like that, or with a credit card now. So we're definitely working in that direction as much as we can.
All right. Any quick question? You got another one to?
Yes, sir.
Oh.
Maybe we can't do it electronically, we're having some tech, no, I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
We have it going.
Too far away for me.
Are you ready for me?
Sure.
The Building Department, as you all are aware, Craig Clark resigned from the city of Waterloo, so we've done some reorganization to put the Building Department under, underneath myself as a director, with Greg Alham serving as the interim building official. Their existing mission statement is to gain compliance with the minimum standards regulating building and structures. We'll probably try to add a little flair to that, to really state, I think, what we want to do. It's very matter-of-fact, but I think what might be better is that we state that we want to efficiently and professionally serve the citizens and businesses of Waterloo with inspections, to help in the protection of individuals, employees, structural safety, infrastructure, and the general public. The Building Department strives to help create a safe living, working, and visitor environment in the construction and growth of the community, as we continue to see new development, rehabilitation, and redevelopment of the built environment. So again, the Building Department covers all types of permits, general construction, plumbing, electrical, HVAC, fire safety, footing drains, the FOG program, and rental inspections. Staff, you have myself as the director, we have a building official, we have six building inspectors, we have two property safety inspectors, we have the FOG and footing drain inspector, we have the permit writer, and we have 1.75 administrative secretaries. Note, we are eliminating the plan review examiner position by reorganizing the department with the elimination of another department head and maintenance duties from the building official, allowing that position to do more plan review, and we're also cross-training the permit writer for plan review. On a daily basis, they're working on permits, the permit counter for all residential, commercial, and industrial site plans, processing fees for collected for permits by fax, email, and electronically, permit inspections in the field for city and county, which they also do by contract, and questions from the general public. On a monthly basis, they have the contractors board, the plumbing board, the heating board, the electrical board, and service staff to the ADA commission. They also do testing for licensing, processing for licensing, and fees every month. Permits last year, new residential units were 205, there were 62 new garages, 11 new commercial buildings, 15 commercial additions. Other permits for repairs, plumbing, heating, and electrical totaled up to 10,620 total permits. That would average about 41 permits per day, or about seven inspections per inspector per day. Again, the city of Waterloo is hired by contract, and bills per hour spent for county work. Through this partnership, the professional staff of the city of Waterloo is able to help Blackhawk County for appropriate inspections for construction in the unincorporated areas of the county. All of the staff has professional training for certifications for expertise in their respective fields. Furthermore, the staff has cross-training to help cover each other in times of vacation, miss training, et cetera, to help avoid overtime costs when possible. We have two combination inspectors for help for backup of other inspectors. The rental inspector is able to help with fire safety inspections. The combination inspector can help back up the FOG and FDD inspector, and the FOG and FDD inspector can help back up, because he's also a combination inspector certification as well. The Building Department has further increased its availability and efficiency in recent years by allowing permits to be paid by credit card, having electronic submissions of permits, Bruce ruined that for me, no, that's okay, when possible by email or website contact. The inspectors are armed with laptops with connection to the permit system and office to be able to write permit information and inspection sign-offs in the field when possible. So we're making ourselves more available to the public and improving our ability to process information without repetition of work. They used to go ahead and write things down on paper and then bring it back to the administrative staff to write in the permit. So again, we're trying to make ourselves more efficient. Ecnop Development, again, this is the number-one goal stated by the city council, having a professional and efficient building department is crucial to continued development of the city of Waterloo. The Building Department staff is critical in making projects commence, stay on time, and to help developers and investors meet their timelines for development of projects. The city of Waterloo previously received an ISO rating, which is a system of measuring the effectiveness of building departments as a whole, which is scored after a visit and review of our entire department by the International Building Code Board. And I actually had a typo here, it was of 3.8. The lower the score, the better. Three is considered to be an excellent rating. It's a 1 to 10 score. In the past, we've been at a six rating in years past, but in the more recent years, we've lowered that to the 3.8. I show this slide again to show the increase in activity in the Waterloo area in housing and the reduction in staff we're proposing and still meet the demands of efficiency and professionalism. Again, we're seeing more activity, and we're still able to meet that with existing staff, and actually the reduction in staff now with the plan review position. The past year to glance, again, talking about the total permit valuation of our second highest, our second highest in total residential units, our highest in single-family homes in the highest month, and all the other commercial activity that we talked about in the last presentation, again, the Building Department is out there working on these processes, helping keep in these developers on time. Looking ahead, the goals, continue to look at new codes for proper safety and building design and construction, continue to look for efficiencies in making contact with the public and contractors electronically, permit system upgrades, et cetera, for storage of information, continue to efficiently and professionally perform over 10,000 inspections, and continue to cross-train employees through training, certification, and hiring process practices.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Noel, do we, can we help, or do we help the housing people with their Section 8? I know they get behind sometimes inspections.
We have tried, impossible. Sometimes they have other criteria they have to look at that is by HUD standards and not by building code standards, so we'll continue to look at that in terms of kind of that cross-training if we can. But sometimes, there's some that we can help with, there's others that they need to go out and look at furthermore, because they have to be, again, they have to meet, they have to be certified by HUD standards and go to specific training for that.
Oh, they do? Okay. Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
You should have hurried up, Noel.
Sorry. Nobody was saying anything, I was going to run.
On our schedule, we have another building presentation later on down. Is that wrong?
That's the one he just.
That's him. Okay, that's, okay, so that's just misplaced on the, okay.
They're trying to make me stay longer.
And looking at your budget right here?
Yes.
So you're dropping one position in this department?
Correct.
Okay.
And is that the one we did with the combination? Was that one, or that potential?
The plan review specialist is a position that is now gone.
Yep.
We think we can meet that through the building official and through the permit writer. Doing, working, sharing the work.
All right. Thank you.
And your budget is zero. Costs us nothing.
Yeah, they bring in a lot. Yeah.
This is the Traffic Operations Department. Our mission statement is to provide the highest level of service to the citizens of Waterloo by providing reductions of accidents, congestion, and travel times through efficient and effective design, installation, maintenance, and operation of traffic control devices and public education. This is our organizational structure. I realize it's kind of hard to see, it's pretty small. So I'll explain it this way. Our traffic division has the superintendent, which is myself, one traffic engineer, Mohammed Alahi, a signal technician foreman, a signal technician two, a signal technician one, an electrical foreman, three electricians, and an administrative secretary. Our sign and paint division has one foreman and two equipment operators. We're responsible, they are responsible for all signs and marking and painting of streets. They fabricate signs for city streets, other city departments, and Waterloo schools. They also plow, salt, and do snow removal, and also provide flood control. Our overall duties and services, we have 200 signalized intersections, we have 20 miles of traffic fiber that we maintain, two rapid flashers, four HAWK signals, 160 EVP, which is emergency vehicle preemption intersections, 1,800 city-owned streetlights, 19 early warning sirens, which are the civil defense sirens. We expand fiber optics network. We do conflict monitor testing for 197 intersections annually. We perform over 1,500 locates annually, that's for our underground wire. We also assist other departments on that. We replace and repair damaged light poles, signals, underground conduits, and wire. We review all plans for asphalt overlay, street reconstruction, Highway 218 overlay, Wagner Road projects. We review all that because we have underground, we also have traffic signals, we have loops, so we have to review all that. We are on-call 24/7.
And Sandy, just really quickly, when you say expanding fiber optics network, that means that you physically have been laying fiber, right?
We either have done some, or we have contractor do it, and we maintain it.
Okay.
And we hook everything up, so.
It's a HAWK signal.
A HAWK signal is one that, there's one at Hawkeye, there's one at the fire station, Fire Station 8. They are completely dead until they are activated. They will flash yellow, and then they'll flash red. And as soon as the vehicle goes through, they'll go back and be totally out. So they do not operate unless they're activated.
Come on, Councilman Power, everyone knows that.
I didn't know if we were counting hawks.
Yeah, they're called HAWK signals. We just installed one not too long ago on Ridgeway for Kitchell School.
All right.
We study improvement and improvements to upgrade safety and efficiency. We have a number of generators that we set out during power outages to keep signals running. We also have backup batteries in our high-speed intersections that will kick in and run the traffic signals if there's a power outage. We do intersection investigations, we do signal design and maintenance, we are working on the intelligent transportation system, we do parking investigations and designs, which mean we work for, we work with Republic Parking, but we also investigate if somebody needs more parking, or there's a parking issue anywhere in the city. We do all the pavement markings, we replace and upgrade all of our signs, we fabricate signs for city departments and outside agencies, we do pedestrian ADA requirements, we work with Engineering Department on that. We also are working on bicycle accommodations at this time. We do traffic calming studies, which mainly are requests for speed humps that we have to do a total study on. We assist the police department when it comes to crime scenes. We are called out to take investigators up in our High Rangers so they can take photos. We also do flood control and snow removal. Some of our completed projects and highlights from 2016, we replaced all of the LED signaling lamps. It's a replacement that we, we did, there's a Mid-American Energy rebate, which basically almost paid for the total cost of the lamps. These have not been replaced for approximately 12 years. We upgraded video detection upgrades at Broadway and Cedar Bend, Broadway and Donald, Washington and Mitchell, Washington and Hawthorne, Washington and Williston. This is where there may have been loops that we upgraded with cameras, video detection cameras, and we did all that in-house. We have worked on the Highway 63 project upgrade with the contractors. Once the electrical contractor completes all of his signals and streetlights, we go out and do the punch list and find corrections that need to be made. We also did the same thing on Kimball Avenue. We go in and inspect after they get done to either find problems or maybe things that weren't done correctly. We had the La Porte Road and San Martin Safety Improvement, where more signals and poles were added. The signals were installed, which is a safety improvement project at Iowa 21, which is Hawkeye Road and Shawless. That was just completed last fall. We did safety improvements at Fletcher and University. We installed the Columbus High Catholic Middle School crosswalk flashers. Highway 63 in Shawless, there was a pedestrian crossing put in with a rapid flashers. We have replaced 42 streetlight poles and bases. We did numerous speed hump studies, and the recommendations came through for Idaho Street, which is by the Highland School, and also on Adams Street by Sullivan Park. We installed the fiber optic cable to the fuel kiosks, so now we have all the connections to the Public Works Building, so all the readings come in for the fuel site right to our building. We have received, we have requested, we have applied for, and received a million dollars last year in CMAC, Iowa DOT Safety and ICAP grants. CMAC is Construction Management Air Quality. ICAP is Iowa Clean Air attainment program. We did a TV movie theater traffic safety campaign video. We were one of the first in the state to ever do anything like this. We also did online children traffic safety quiz, where we have vendors donate prizes, and also like the sports plaques in the youth pavilion. So kids take this traffic safety quiz online, and whoever gets 100% qualifies for a prize. So we are working with Waterloo schools on that, it all goes through the school system. We also have a traffic safety elementary school outreach program that is federally funded, where we have police and fire go out and talk to kids, and we also go out and talk to kids about safety and crossing streets. Our annual city line striping is approximately 100 miles. We use 1,100 gallons of white paint, 1,705 gallons of yellow paint, 44,000 pounds of beads. We have 491 crosswalks, 93 railroad crossings, 38 yellow curves, 28 false islands, which are painted islands in the street, 22 speed humps, 16 parking lots, and four ramps. We still maintain the ramps when it comes to parking. We still maintain the ramps when it comes to parking and striping. We installed 100 thermoplastic arrows on the streets last year. This is just a picture of our sign lab. We do fabrication of signs now, so we don't have to have the huge inventory that we used to have. We buy blanks, sign blanks in quantity, so it's much cheaper. Our sheeting and film is also that way. We did flood control and snow removal. We are very active in putting up the flood wall gates. We have a lot of the equipment and materials stored in the Public Works Building for that. We also do all the parking lots and a lot of the sidewalks bike trails with our equipment. This is just kind of a picture of the sirens. We maintain all the civil defense sirens. We have many, not many, but a few knockdowns during the year. This is just one of the new decorative poles on Highway 63. We did LED upgrades for street lighting on Airport Boulevard, Downtown 4th Street. We are having a problem with those lights right now that we have ordered new ones, so we'll be installing them as soon as they come in. And we also did the 18th Street Bridge. Those are all LEDs now. We also did Prospect Boulevard, but that was a couple of years ago. A couple of our completed projects here are just pictures. The one where it says, "Prepare to Stop," that is Highway 21 in Shawless. The one on the right, I think it's right, was Laporte Road and San Marnon, where we added additional signal poles because of the accident rate, there were many accidents there. That was a traffic safety improvement, which was a grant, so it costs the taxpayers nothing, except for our labor. The other one is the 25 mile per hour sign on it is the flasher that we put up on West 9th Street by Columbus High School. That was actually initiated by the middle school kids where we went in and met with them and worked with them on that. That was one of their projects. Our goals and objectives, we are mainly maintenance, but we also have a lot going on, especially with the new developments in, in fiber. We aim to improve traffic safety throughout the city, linking traffic vehicular, pedestrian, and bicycle improvements to the city's overall goals. Developing and implementing a citywide monitoring camera system. We are working with consulting engineers, the Police Department, IT, we're all involved in this. Advanced Central Traffic Management System, install adaptive signal control system and fiber optics on Highway 218 and San Marnon Drive. That's a big circle of our fiber that we have a grant to install. It will connect the air, or the Fire Station Eight and all of our signals on the San Marnon area. One of our goals is to study and design Green Hill Road and Progress Avenue. There's been a neighborhood group that we have met with many, many times. It does warrant signals, but there is no funding at this time. So we're hoping to study and design that intersection this year and then possibly, hopefully get CIP money to install it in the next year. We have funding to widen Amesboro from Blackhawk to Downing to improve that intersection. And we also have our traffic safety awareness campaign that is federally funded that we continue year after year. We need to replace and upgrade our streetlight poles, install cost-effective LEDs, which we are trying to do in certain sections of street lighting. We are also looking at the sportsplex crosswalk safety issue. We're working on rapid flashers in that area. We need to upgrade our stop signs after so many years. According to the MUTCD, they need to be upgraded and this is the year we need to start on that. We are having a new signal installation at Osage and Dubuque Road that is also grant-funded and we are installing that in-house. We are re-timing the traffic signals in the downtown area, which is also a grant. We are, we need to replace three early warning sirens. I am working on specs for that at this time. We are going to apply and hopefully obtain another million dollars in safety grants. And we also are working on safety training for our employees. So if we go to our budget, we're all road use tax funded. Our revenue lines are pretty much held the same as last year. Our, over our expenses, beings that we have Kimball Avenue now, Shawless Road, and also University Avenue, we'll be painting that and signing that, so I need to order more paint this year to cover that. Our street lighting expense for our utility costs is increasing about $15,000. That's also road use tax fund. Additional streetlights are being installed, especially with all the new developments, even though they're LEDs, there is a savings there. The LEDs that Mid-American is putting in as lights burn out, we will not see a savings on that for a couple of years. And the utility cost last year was more than what I had budgeted, so to increase that 15,000, we should, we should be good to cover everything this year. Our traffic signal utility cost will increase a little bit this year mainly because of the additional signals we have put in for traffic safety improvements and two new intersections that will be installed. So that should cover that, that's all road use tax fund also. And that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Sandy, can you talk to?
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Yes, sir.
Sandy, I'm glad to hear you're moving ahead with the traffic safety and public safety cameras. As you know, I've been an advocate of those public safety cameras. Are we going to get some of those installed this year? Are we, are we getting to the point where we can see those cameras being deployed in the, you know, the areas that have high crime, first of all, and then state, citywide later on?
We are working on that. Through Chris Youngblood and our department and the Police Department, Dan will be doing a work session a couple of weeks, maybe?
Is it after the budget or before?
Anyway, we are working on that. There's a lot more entailed than just putting cameras up. We have to have servers, we have to have the ability to record. And at this time, we don't have anything big enough to do that. We do have a traffic control center in the Public Works Building that everything comes to. So at this time, our, some of our cameras record. We have helped the Police Department out, especially on Highway 63, because those cameras are recording traffic.
Are we, are we, do we have, have you submitted a capital budget to the CIP this year?
We have not because we really don't know what it's going to cost yet. That's why we are talking.
So we're not doing it this year? Next year?
If we can find additional funding this year in fiscal year 18, we'll be working on it.
Well, did we ever explore taking that money out of TIFs?
We have talked about that.
I asked the question, they were going to make sure, Michelle was going to make sure that was a legal expenditure.
And, and Dan and I have talked about that, but.
It is?
I, we've talked about it, but I don't know if Michelle has come up with the answer yet.
Well, I think, I think one, one to add to Councilman's point, we are, the infrastructure needed for this, we're moving forward to try to put the pieces in place so we can get to that point, right?
Yes.
So it may not be the physical camera view, it may be the infrastructure continuation of laying the fiber. Didn't we just do some type of like network?
We're working on the network right now. And I can get you the map. We have a map of our fiber, the city's fiber, and what the Police Department is asking for. We have all overlays for that, so I can get you that map so you can see exactly what we need and what we have.
See, I think that's important so, so that the council knows and the community know. We're moving forward.
We are, yes, we are.
That we're, we're taking the steps in place. And I think that's kind of was the question, we're taking the necessary steps.
But we want to make sure we're doing it right.
Let's, uh, let's have another committee meeting pretty soon to talk about this.
Sure.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Forest Village, 1725 Huntington Road. This is a very important issue, these cameras. And when you say we're talking about, we're looking at, that doesn't help us a lot to know what, when it's going to happen. You know, it's like kicking the can down the road. We're working on this project, we're looking at this, we're doing that. We need some more definite goals. Like some of the council people say, we've got to put some days, dates, and times on these things. And you, Amesboro Avenue, you've got the funding. Do you have a, a time that you're planning on trying to buy the property or start condemnation or whatever it is you've got to do to take care of that Amesboro widening?
We are working with Community Development Engineering on that right now.
There again, working with doesn't, doesn't tell us a whole lot. And one thing, Sandy, on your, your striping and your beads and things like that, your lines, as you know better than I do, they don't last very long. You're putting beads in to try and help improve that, you're doing what you can. But can't we go out and research with state and the county and the city, or other cities, what they're using for striping paint? I think there's some money to be saved if we get the, something that will go on and hold.
So Sandy, are you familiar with what we use compared to other communities?
Actually, most of the cities go on the state bid, just like we do, and buy from the DOT. So everybody pretty much has that same problem. The beads are reflective, so that's, so they show up at night and during rain and things like that. It's, it's just, you know, we, we've, we've looked at other stuff. In fact, one year we did purchase paint from someone else and it didn't hold up at all and it clogged up our machines. But, um, you know, every year we go with the state bid because it is cheaper, but that's what other, like Cedar Rapids, everybody uses that.
So, so as Mr. Dilliver was asking, as far as what other communities are doing, we're doing the same things.
We are.
Cedar Rapids and other places when we get our bid. With regards to Amesboro, is that a project that's slated for 2018 or 2019? Or in the CIP, or are we doing the engineering portion of it right now to begin that process?
Okay, that is a grant. It's a traffic safety grant. And the funding will all be available, like I think August it's, it's, it's sent to us.
Okay.
So it could be started next fall and probably finished the next spring.
So we say most likely.
Probably a year or so before.
Completed by 2000, the, the end of 2018?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay, all right. And, um, and with regards to the, the traffic camera portion of this, I guess the conversation is it's a priority of council, it's a priority of mine, it's a priority of staff. We have to know exactly what we're doing first.
Yes.
So instead of just, you know, for instance, if we probably would have known five, 10 years ago when we first put the cameras in that we currently have that we can do this, we probably would have done it differently. We are taking steps to move towards that direction. There is no target date established yet, but we are doing the study, we're doing the background and the due diligence to make sure we're moving, we're moving that forward. So we're not kicking the can down the road, we are actually taking steps to get to where we need to be. But you just don't put cameras up. There has to be interconnectivity, there has to be servers, there has to be a system in place. PD has to be connected to traffic. There's more steps than just putting a camera up, but we are taking, taking steps to move in that direction. You have one more question for us?
Just one more statement. I would strongly encourage you to use TIF funds for that. TIF funds need to help all the people, and this is a way it can help all the people rather than one new business or whatever. TIF funds, please.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Sandy, just one question actually, and first of all, I want to congratulate you on the million dollars in grants that you, the safety grants that you wrote. The combination was about a million dollars, and I think that's a great job and well done on that. And hopefully we can.
We couldn't have done it without our traffic engineers, so.
There you go, well, to the group, great job, and hopefully we can keep that going here for the next year. So thank you very much for doing that. And I think the thing I want, I mean, I understand the camera thing is going on and I, that's great, but fiber optic, how could we, or what's the program? Could we give that more priority so we could advertise to businesses that want to relocate here that we are wired, that we have fiber optic for their internet purposes? Because I think that's really what, I don't know if we're certified in that or what label we give it, but what would be the program, or how could we give that some more priority going forward to, maybe we have to lay more fiber optic or get some more grants to help us do it? Or what, what ideas could we think about on that?
We think that's very important, too. I mean, we would rather have fiber connections than wireless or hardwired. We went after grants, we have been granted some, which is wonderful. We're still working on that. I guess the main thing is, is to sit down with everyone and show what we have and what's available out there. And we are laying enough. Our fiber is big enough that there is a possibility that we could sell some strands, but we need a better, a better connection yet, you know? And so what, in, in the San Marnon one, what we are doing is we're going from the 218 ramps through the whole San Marnon corridor to put fiber in this year. So that will, that will really help a big circle within the city of fiber that we will have. We also worked with UPN, which is a consultant that came in and, and was laying fiber, I believe for Verizon. And we made an agreement with them that they could use our conduits and they would run the fiber and we could hook up to it. So if we can work more with contractors or consultants that are doing that within the city, then it's like a sharing program. So they're using our conduits, we're using their fiber, or they're using our fiber, you know, in sharing. So we are working on that, too.
And it's actually a good question. And it's probably a larger discussion as opposed to what traffic is doing because there's a couple of economic development groups, and I believe WEDA is one of them that's taking a look at just telecommunications in general for the city of Waterloo, making sure that we're competitive. So this is part of a conversation that's being driven by private trying to help get us to the point where we need to be. So it is an excellent question. It makes us more competitive. You know, if we already have good sewer systems, we already have water and all those things, this would just be so much of a feather in the cap. Any other questions about traffic? I also want to personally recognize Sandy as well. She had taken on the, the heavy burden of helping us do the floods and looking after our Public Works area while Mark was away. She, she did it, she did an excellent job. And if you could have seen her leadership during the floods this year in another area where just taking those responsibilities, taking calls at night, it was, it was something special to see. So I want to acknowledge her for her efforts the last several months of all she did to help move us forward. All right, animal control.
Okay, well, if not, I know what I changed.
Okay, this is Animal Control Services. Our mission statement is to provide quality service to the citizens through education, enforcement, and leadership, promote responsible pet ownership, including vaccinations, spay and neutering. Again, this is our organizational structure, which is very hard to read, it's pretty small. This is kind of hard to, we, we have a manager director, I, I think. Two full-time officers, three part-time officers. We're on duty 24 hours a day, seven days a week for Waterloo and Cedar Falls. Our duties are we enforce city animal control ordinance and policies, barking dog complaints, unsanitary condition complaints, too many animals per household, dog and cats. unsanitary condition complaints, too many animals per household, dog and cats at large. We pick up confined domestic animals. We set traps for cats, dogs, and sick and injured wildlife. We pick up all dead animals except owners' animals. If they request, we do charge them a pickup fee and a disposal fee. We investigate neglected, abused, or abandoned animals. We do potential, potentially dangerous dog calls, aggressive domestic animal calls, sick or injured domestic animals. We pick up of only injured, sick wildlife. We investigate all bite cases within the city limits of Waterloo and Cedar Falls. We also sell pet licenses and continue microchipping dogs and cats. And we educate the public on being a responsible pet owner by licensing, vaccinating, and spay and neutering. Last year, we seized quite a few dogs due to neglect. We were able to take them out of bad situations. I do have a few pictures, not all, but just a few of what we took. This is a pit bull that was on a log chain, very, very short, no food, no water, in the backyard in the summer with no shelter. This was a little dog we took from property that had no shelter. It has tumors. It was missing hair, very, very bad condition. Here's the little dog we took because it was sitting out in the hot sun in a crate. No food, no water. This was a puppy that was tied to a fence. They had a little blanket, moldy dishes, so we pulled it. And we have the right to go in on property and take animals. This looks like we're ready to be dressed to go to the moon, but we have to enter places, so we dress accordingly. This was a house that we had to go into, that health department, fire, code enforcement building. Nobody would go in, but they had animals, so we had to go in. We removed 20 cats and five dogs from this residence. And here's some pictures of what our officers go into. And people actually live in this house. But we do do nice things. We return animals to owners. If, if we know who they belong to, or they have a license or they're microchipped, we return them to their owners. We do usually charge a pickup fee when we take them back. Under some circumstances, we don't, but most of the time we do. And owners are very happy to pay the $25 to get their animals back.
Hey, there's a van.
Yeah. We have some non-ordinary encounters. This is an animal that they were burrowing out by the baseball diamond, the Buck Stadium, causing damage. Actually, we were lucky to trap one. We called Iowa State. We took it to Iowa State. They were very interested in it. Nobody knew what it was. They researched it and held it for like three months. And what they came up with is that it was like a hairless groundhog. They had never seen one. We researched and we found a place out east and down in Texas where they had had these animals, but nowhere else. Okay, anyway, they brought it back after the flood, and we did release it back to where, to where we had gotten it. There were many of them out there. They were nocturnal, so we went out there many times in the burrows and they would be staring at you, and as soon as you went close, they ducked down in. So they were really kind of creepy, but we encounter this kind of thing. We also have deer that had a tile stuck on its head through its antlers that we had to work with to finally get it loose.
When I was asked the question, they always ask, like, what is the biggest surprise that you've ever had on council as mayor? And that picture was the biggest surprise I've ever seen, so...
I remember that day.
Sorry about that.
The other one is a picture of a pregnant pot-bellied pig that we chased around town. An individual on Mulberry Street had four pot-bellied pigs. This one got loose. We chased it around the area along with the police officer was with us, too. We finally got him, but he removed him from the city. But then he was, he took him up by Cedar Falls. So the mama had babies, and so we had to go out and chase them again, and we got two of their little babies. So we did end up getting them all, and they went to rescue, so they were all taken care of, and the mama, too. Here's some of our other stuff. We got a call into a garage. It was an eight-foot boa. So we have snake tongs. We went out and got that. We picked up the owl. We picked up the eagle. These all went to rehab, so they, they don't go to the Humane Society. We have connections with wildlife rehab or rescuers that take these animals and, and get them back to, back out in the wildlife. Our highlights and accomplishments for 2016 were, we responded to 3,619 calls. 2,856 were Waterloo, 763 were Cedar Falls. We investigated 225 bite cases, 163 in Waterloo, 62 in Cedar Falls. We picked up and disposed of 583 DOAs, including deer. That was 402 in Waterloo with 64 deer, 181 in Cedar Falls with 62 deer. We seem to have a lot more deer in Cedar Falls than we have in Waterloo to pick up. We issued 68 citations. We issued 263 warnings in Waterloo. We issued 49 warnings in Cedar Falls. In Cedar Falls, citations are issued by the police department. We call them out and they work with us if we need, if we feel a citation is needed. We deem four dogs potentially dangerous. That means they have to meet the criteria of the ordinance. We deem two dogs vicious, which means they're gone. We took 365 dogs to the Humane Society, 441 cats, 30 injured or sick wildlife, and nine pocket pets. Pocket pets are like a gerbil or any little animal that, that we find out on the street or were called that it's a stray. This does not include the animals that the public takes in. Every month, I get a, a list of what the public takes in and what we take in, and we cross-reference everything. Because we get billed for each individual animal and also what the public takes in. We also, as Waterloo, pays for that. Cedar Falls pays for their own. They get billed for any animals that we take in or that the citizens of Cedar Falls take in. The city of Cedar Falls pays for that. We have a partnership with the Cedar Bend Humane Society to issue licenses for adoptions and redemptions. So they issue licenses out there. The adoption licenses, of course, are all $5 because the animals are all spayed or neutered before they're adopted. They're allowed to keep that money as, as actually, we're getting the, the animals in the system then. So every year, we go after these people or remind them of, of a license. Redemptions, that money comes back to us, those licenses do. Animal control officers issue licenses now out of the van. So if we take an animal back to a person, they have a valid rabies, we can issue a license right on the spot, so, so we have them. We also microchip out of the van, so if, and we charge for that. So if a citizen, when we return the animal, would also like their animal microchipped, we do that on the spot. 2,249 dog licenses were issued, 460 cat licenses were issued. Our goals for fiscal year 18 is to target problem areas of Waterloo, Cedar Falls. I will let you know, we do know there was dog fighting going on in Waterloo. We have not been able to catch them yet. We're working on that. We continue to review and update the animal control ordinance, continue to expand the partnership with Cedar Falls for Animal Control Services. I've been contacted by UNY Police. They would like, I have sent them a contract. They're looking at it now. They would like to have us provide their animal control service. Continue to expand the partnership with Cedar Bend Humane Society. Increase revenue with licensing and microchipping. Educate the public on the importance of licensing, spay, neuter, and being a responsible pet owner. Review and submit applications for grants and donations. And provide NACE, which is National Animal Care and Control Association, training for certi, excuse me, certification. Our budget for animal control is out of the sanitation fund. I'm negotiating right now a 3% increase with the city of Cedar Falls to cover our increases. And you and I would be paying the same rates as Cedar Falls if they agree on the contract. Our expenses due to an increase in cost from the Humane Society that I finally just received yesterday will be approximately $5,000 a year. They are increasing each animal, I'm trying to think, a dollar an animal. So I took what we took in this year and what the public took in and increased that. It would be a dollar a day for an animal, so they're required to hoard our animals for three days, not five, just three. And came up with approximately $500. May not be that much. We're really not taking our wildlife out there like we used to. We have a good relationship with the wildlife rehab and any rehab that, so it doesn't cost us to take them to rehab where it would to the Humane Society. And that's it.
All right, so you listed, you listed the changes within the budget. Are there any questions, questions for Sandy? Yes, sir.
David Drive, 3145 West Fourth Street. What is the budget for fiscal year 18 compared to last year and when this was started against, like, Black Hawk Humane Society taking control of the whole thing again? At the time this was initiated, we were told that it was not going to cost the citizens as much for animal control to have it in-house as it was to have a contract with Black Hawk Humane Society. And it seems to me like this is just kind of snowballed, but we never get a comparison between Black Hawk Humane Society and our in-house costs.
You mean, when we originally made, moved, three or four years ago to do it in-house, was there a cost savings?
It was indicated that it would cost the citizens of Waterloo less to do it in-house than it would for the contract at Black Hawk Humane Society. And I think that was proven incorrect the first year it started, but I'm just wondering what the comparison is today, if that's been done, or...
Okay, so...
My, my recollection is that we were, the cost when we were outsourcing it all to Cedar Bend was well over $200,000 a year. The net cost to our, to this budget now is less than that. It's projected to be $166,000, so I believe it has, the cost is less with this organization.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Sandy, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
When you analyze the cost of providing services to Cedar Falls, are we at least covering, are we covering our operating overhead? Are we, are we, are we getting a fair deal with Cedar Falls, is what I'm trying to say? I know it's kind of hard to track all the expenses, but the cost per call and et cetera, are we making it back in fees?
Yes. When we first started contracting to Cedar Falls, we boarded the animals at that time. So we broke it all down for like building expenses, food, animals, gas, salaries and everything. When we quit doing that, we re, we redid the, how can I say, the, the formula. And so what we added in was, we add in like wear and tear on a vehicle. We add in wages, benefits, gas, and wear and tear. So yes, I mean, we have a formula that, I can get that to you, but we used a formula where it would be cost benefit, like a cost benefit ratio. And so that's why this year, because we haven't increased it for a couple, for two years, that I refigured in with the wages and stuff, that I sent them a proposal that it would be a 3% increase. I mean, each call would be a 3% increase because we bill different for each call. Like a wildlife call is different than a regular call, and an overtime call past 4:00 is an overtime call. So yes, they're, yes.
And I like your idea of getting you and, you and I involved, you know, to...
They, the police, oh, I can't remember his first name. His last name's Tyler, called me a couple weeks ago and inquired, and we had a really good discussion, and so I sent him a contract. And I haven't heard back yet, but they're very interested.
Yes, sir.
Sandy, just a quick question. This could be left field, and let me know if it is, but the deer that are hit and provided it's a, you know, it's a, got hit five minutes ago and you picked it up and all that, are you able to donate that meat to a, a good organization to use that meat? Or do we have to destroy that an, that animal?
Well, we don't because by the time we get there, or by the time we get the call, a lot of times they've laid there for a while, or maybe even a day or two.
Okay.
But there has been times when, if, if the sheriff's department or police department call, that they must make phone calls because sometimes when we get there, the animal's gone.
Okay, fair enough.
All right, any other questions?
I just have a comment. I think this is a clear example of where sometimes going to the public sector, excuse me, the private sector is not a benefit, where we're actually saving money by holding it in-house through government agencies, in terms of costs, right?
Yes, Mr. Morrissey.
Sandy, thank you very much, and I appreciate your response to this as well, to questions and situations that have come up that have been presented to you. But I also want to say that the animal control is part of public safety, and you provide that, a public safety service to all of Waterloo, and I appreciate that as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Sandy. Culture and arts.
We are ready? Well, first, I want to officially protest having to follow Sandy's non-ordinary animal encounters, because that's just not fair. Actually, we have quite a bit of fun here, and we have a lot of unusual art encounters and unusual child encounters. But at any rate, cultural and arts, our mission is to stimulate inquiry, provoke dialogue, and connect people through the arts. That's a relatively new mission statement. Wanted it to be simple and punchy. But what it really means is to educate, entertain, inspire, and build community. We operate under the auspices of the Waterloo Center for the Arts, and in doing so, the cultural and arts department provides free and low-cost cultural opportunities and amenities for the citizens of the community, and that's citizens of all ages. Cultural and arts programs improve quality of life in the Cedar Valley. They draw visitors to Waterloo, and they create positive economic impacts. I think very often, people think of arts and culture as something extra, a little icing on the cake, but they really are not extras. It's, but rather, they're critical components of a healthy, vibrant, successful, and sustainable city. This facility, last year, celebrated 50 years of providing cultural and arts programs within these walls. And our history has a, an admirable, strong history of strong support for arts and culture, one that it can be very proud of, I believe. And in return, the arts enrich the lives of our citizens and support our economy. Just a little bit of statistics. In the, in FY '16, the most completed fiscal year, we welcomed over 122,000 visitors. And that includes not only Waterloo citizens, which make up a good portion of that, but also out-of-town visitors, and, and by doing so, support local tourism. The bulk of our marketing dollars that we have available to utilize to promote the programs that we offer here come to us through the hotel motel tax. And as such, we're required to target those marketing dollars to media that has a reach outside of this county. And so many of our programs do draw heavily from outside of this county, particularly certain weddings, conferences, festivals. Some of those attract up to about 50,000. certain weddings, conferences, festivals, some of those attract up to about 50% outside Waterloo patronage. And these people visit and utilize hotels, restaurants, and local stores. They spend dollars, and those dollars are not necessarily reflected in our budget, they certainly aren't, but those are real monetary contributions which significantly impact our local economy. We hosted or presented more than 1,000 programs and events during that year, so that's a lot of things happening at the Center for the Arts, and we served more than 20,000 children and parents in the Phelps Youth Pavilion, which is an incredible, award-winning, interactive children's museum that's housed within the center here. And anecdotally, I'm always seeing families that come and visit from large cities that are very impressed, and they, they remark that what we have here is often better than what they have in large metropolitan areas like Chicago, although I love the Chicago Children's Museum. No shade there. We presented 35 exhibitions at the Center for the Arts and at locations throughout the community. These exhibitions do a number of different things, they're, they're free and open to the public, they celebrate our local artists and present their work for the community to enjoy. We also bring in art from other places and represent cultures from all over the world. We utilize these exhibitions to showcase our local cultural heritage. For instance, in an exhibit last year, we presented work by Grant Wood, Iowa's most famous artist, and there, even though Grant Wood is Iowa's most famous artist, there's still a lot of things that people haven't had the chance to see in regards to his work or learn about, and we did something, I think, was pretty unique and special, in that we brought together a series of work, the history of penmanship that he had done in the '30s, and these pieces had never been together and exhibited since that time, so we were the first to do that here in Waterloo, Iowa. So, those are the kinds of programs that have import beyond Waterloo and bring people in specifically to see those. Many of our exhibits reflect on current issues through material culture and creative expression. One such exhibition was, an exhibition called Speaking Volumes, where artists working at many different levels from all over the country, some of them were art educators, some of them were very well-known professional artists, we had artists of all different cultural backgrounds, we had one artist that was legally blind, and these artists took hate literature and used that as a springboard to create art that spoke about the need for mutual respect and acceptance and, and unity and peace. We try to do things that are unique, and I think we really do things that are unique and significant, things that are relevant to our community but also beyond Waterloo, things that will bring people in, as I've been mentioning, and take an opportunity to mo, to give an example and promote an upcoming event. On Thursday night, we will be opening a new exhibition. It is Works by Wayne Coyne, who is an internationally known rock star, he's the lead singer of The Flaming Lips, and at any rate, he is going to be doing his first-ever art exhibition, a solo show, here at the Waterloo Center for the Arts, and he's coming, and he will be here, and there's a lot of interest in this, and I have been hearing from people from, like, Chicago that are coming in specifically for this event, so we're excited about that. And we've also, we also have a, a large permanent collection, and last year, we added more than 400 works to that collection, and most of these additions to the collection were donations, there were some sponsored purchases as well, those do not come from our city budget, but those additions to the collection would be valued at several thousand, $100,000. As I mentioned, our programs and services include, as I mentioned, art exhibitions, we offer a wide range of classes, workshops, and lectures, and these, again, are for all ages, from preschoolers up through seniors, classes in all art, media, drawing and painting, clay, jewelry, we have a pretty active stained glass program, fiber arts, we offer dance classes, and these classes change every season, so there's always something new. A wide range of concerts, musical concerts, dance performances, theatrical performances. The Waterloo Community Playhouse and Black Hawk Children's Theater are housed in this facility, and this past year, or the current year that we're in their season, marks their 100th season, and they're presenting 10 major productions, and then along the way, they have smaller productions that they offer. And we offer, plan and present festivals and cultural celebrations, and these facilities are widely used for civic functions, like we are today, for private events and for community events. And whether people refer to this facility as the Rec Center, the Art Center, the Phelps, it is an important community gathering place. People may not know what to call us, but they do come, they visit, they utilize the facility, and they benefit from the center and its programs. We serve audiences, as I mentioned, youth through seniors, and we try to make sure that our programs are accessible to all regardless of income. We certainly work to maximize revenues from admissions and registrations, but we also try to make sure that the financial costs are not a barrier to everyone in our community being able to enjoy arts and culture and participate fully. So, to that end, as I mentioned, our exhibits, many of our concerts and events are free of charge where possible. We have Special Dollar Day on the third Thursday of every month in the Youth Pavilion, so it's just $1 per person to get in, and we have a special rate on Sundays. In addition, we offer tuition scholarships for art classes for those who need them, those who can't afford can take a class each season without charge, and we participate in the Key Card Program, and we offer subsidized tours for preschools, daycares, publics and private schools in the area of our Phelps Youth Pavilion and Exhibitions, and that includes support for the busing costs to get here as well. That's supported largely through the RJ McElroy Trust and Cedar Valley Promise. Special events that we offer for youth include annual art camps, a wide variety of those. Each year, we do an Easter Bunny brunch, no school playdays on those days when school is out of session, we do a Breakfast with Santa program, and a very popular New Year's Eve program, among all the other classes and events that we offer on an ongoing basis. We do a lot of large-scale outdoor events, just a selection of those would include Culture Fest, which is offered in partnership with the Waterloo Community Schools, and that's a showcase of the cultural diversity that we have here in the Cedar Valley. It is a little bit chaotic, but it's really wonderful to see so many faces come together here at the Center for the Arts. That's coming up the first Thursday in April again, and visitors are provided with free samples of different ethnic foods from around the world, there are a wide range of art displays, including a lot of student art, and there are ethnic music and dance performances offered throughout the evening as well. We do an annual event called Fiesta de Mayo, which is our community's celebration of Latino cultural heritage. We offer a Large Stem and Stein Event, which is a popular fundraiser sponsored by Friends of the Art Center in Hy-Vee, and we do an ongoing River Loop Rhythm Series through the summer, free concerts at the River Loop Amphitheater. Every year, we do a Holiday Arts Festival with about 60 regional artists coming, showing their work and selling them, offering, offering their works for sale, and each year, we participate in the World's Greatest Spring Break, and during the five-day event, 4,000 to 5,000 people come and enjoy our Phelps Youth Pavilion at, again, just a dollar per person. Some upcoming new events that we have on the docket, we will be having the first-ever Lou Henry Hoover Festival this spring in May, to, to recognize the fact that First Lady Lou Henry Hoover spent her early years here in Waterloo, Iowa. Not enough people know that or know about what an incredible pioneer she was, and we've recently completed a public art project in a sculpture park, which is located right across from the Grouse Museums, and it features two large bronze sculptures, as well as interpretive kiosks where people can learn about Lou Henry Hoover and the fact that she came from Waterloo. And this will be the first tri, of a triennial festival, so that, and it's being presented in cooperation with the Girl Scouts and Grouse Museums, so that as young people come up through the school and are involved in Girl Scouts and so forth, they'll all have the opportunity to learn about Lou Henry Hoover and have that experience and how she ties to their community. In August, we'll be presenting a Bosnian Cultural Festival at the, hosting that at the Amphitheater, and in September, we will be hosting National Haitian Art Society Conference, and we have people set to come in that are, have expressed interest in coming from Haiti and from both coasts of the United States and points in between. The center holds a very outstanding permanent art collection, in addition to Midwest art by artists living and working today and, and in decades prior. I mentioned Grant Wood before, we have an outstanding collection of work by Grant Wood, including original drawings and paintings, and just in about the last year, we were able to complete our collection of the 19 lithographs that Grant Wood created during his lifetime, and I only know of two other museums that have the full collection of those works. We have a very significant American decorative arts collection, primarily by leading potters. We have a public art collection that we work on, projects, mentioned that we had just completed the Lou Henry Hoover Project in working with engineering with a little help from finance and getting that administered. We, the, the, just a couple other examples of public art projects that, that you may be familiar with, the large mural on, over Lafayette Street on the side of the parking ramp, was something that we coordinated working with Richard Thomas, an artist who had Waterloo roots and was, came to Waterloo in the wake of Hurricane Katrina, and he did this piece celebrating kind of the, the history and all the peoples that came together for Waterloo, to make Waterloo the place that it is. And there's a large blue base sculpture on the Arts Mall by Jerry Cogger, and like I said, that's just a couple of examples. And we also have a wide-ranging and significant international folk art collection, and many of these pieces will be on view within the center. That includes a large group of Mexican folk art pieces, and a distinction that we have, a unique distinction, is that the Waterloo Center for the Arts holds the largest public collection of Haitian art in the entire world. The things, everything that, all of the support that the city provides leverages additional dollars in support from the community. Many of the things that we do are not just programs that the Cultural and Arts Division puts on, they are partnerships with other organizations in the community. So, all these other organizations are bringing resources to the table, and this is just a small sampling of some of the groups that we work with. For instance, the Cedar, the Waterloo Municipal Band performs here and has their offices here. Say Yes to Technology offers technology programs for youth in, at middle-school age. We mentioned the Waterloo Community Playhouse and Black Hawk Children's Theater, who partner with us to provide cultural programming, and just today, maybe about over at this point, there's a partnership with Embark to present a play that looks at the experience of four immigrant farmers, Asian immigrant farmers, and in conjunction with that, there's traditional foods and also crafts for sale. At any rate, the Cultural and Arts Department works to utilize the arts to make Waterloo an attractive, dynamic, and viable place to live, work, do business, visit, play, learn, and raise a family, and we look forward to serving our citizens in FY18.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Kent right now? Yes, sir.
Kent, I just got to think, all of our permanent art that you'd mentioned there, and hundreds of thousands of dollars, that's insured, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay. And does the Center for the Arts get any kind of federal monies, grants, or anything like that?
We get a wide variety of grants, and they range from federal, state, local. We get a cultural partnership grant, pretty much on an annual basis through the Iowa Department of Cultural Affairs, that's one that, that we typically utilize. We also write grants to the Community Foundation, most of those are, are project grants on a case-by-case basis, with the exception of the, the cultural partnership grants through the state. And that, some of those, those are predominantly passed-through grants from, of, there's federal money, the, the State Department of Cultural Affairs is funded through the, the federal dollars as well.
Yeah, anything for the National Endowment for the Arts?
We would be eligible to write grants to the National Endowment for the Arts, and we don't, we have not had a grant from the National Endowment for the Arts for as long as I can remember, but there are grants that would potentially be available.
I, I just was wondering, because...
We do get some that are from the National Endowment but flow through some other organizations, Silos is one of them in the state, so we indirectly receive grant dollars from the National Endowment.
Well, I just was concerned, because I, the latest I'd heard, unless I'd been, unless I've got this wrong, was that that was being eliminated, potentially eliminated.
There are discussions of that, and that would impact our State Department of Cultural Affairs and their ability to continue to fund those partner grants that we do rely on. We get about $13,000 a year through that grant program.
Would, would that affect your budget, though, for fiscal year 18?
That would be a loss of $13,000 of operating support for our budget, and those are important dollars, because those are general operating supports, we can utilize them as needed for whatever is required, that, that can, it gets funneled into our budget to support, you know, our operating expenses.
So, if that were to happen, how do you make that difference, though?
That would be a challenge that we would have to look at, and we would potentially have to reduce some programming.
Okay, thanks, Kent. Kent, we don't own the Haitian art, do we?
We don't own the Haitian art? We, we do not own, we do not hold title to the collection, it's held by the Community Foundation of Northeast Iowa, but it's held for the benefit of the citizens of Waterloo, and nothing from that collection can be sold or disposed of without any proceeds going back into the collection, so it's held in trust for the citizens.
Kent, I see, as far as your number of individuals that are full-time equivalents, I see that there's actually a decrease in the visitor services manager position, can you kind of explain to me how that's working or how it's gonna work?
Certainly. That position was in our budget for a full-time position, and while we would love to have that position be a full-time position, we have, those of you who have been involved with our budgets over the past few years, on an ongoing basis, we really do look at our staffing and try to make sure that we are operating in as streamlined a way as possible, as, as long as we can still be effective. And so, we did have that full-time position that had been open for a while, and we actually made that a part-time position, and so, we will be able to, you know, certainly, we could do more, but I think that we can manage to, to operate and still provide good service with that position being a part-time position.
And Jerome, if you remember, that was the one with the, the combination, so it was a, a need, Kent shifted some of the priorities to another position, but this one is one that's important, because we need to get our numbers back up and have some coordination with the management system to do, so he thought he can do it on a part-time, part-time basis.
Hey, Kent, that position was $57,000 position, you've had it vacant for three years, so where did $60,000 a year go in these budgets, if you never filled that position?
If you look at our budget performance, we have always come in significantly under budget, so those funds were not shifted to another place, those are returned back to the city. Those are returned back to the city.
So that's what helps grow our general fund balance when we have that.
Do we have any vacant positions this year, this time, except that one?
No.
Kent, I want to thank you for spicing up the council chambers and I hope you continue that program for us, so thank you.
We definitely look forward to doing that.
I would, I would agree with that too as well and maybe look at putting some beautiful pictures in the airport. So when our citizens arrive or our visitors arrive that they see there's a lot of cool things happening, a lot of cool opportunities for them to look around in Waterloo.
And yours is overall your budget, I think I see when it's with parentheses means there's a actual you came in less than you did the the year before.
Yes.
And that makes consecutive years as well, so.
Our request represents a slight decrease in our previous request.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Kent, and thanks for hosting today. And I didn't think Ed either, I mean, you pretty much had to be a one-person show today. You got the camera going, you got the audio, you got a television set back there, you've been a good sport about it, so thanks so much for your efforts today as well, Ed. All right, thank you, Kent.
All right, everybody's ready? The mission statement of the police department is to protect, serve and work together with our community to prevent crime and enhance the quality of life in our neighborhoods. That's been our mission statement since two thousand and ten. That was the first year I started working here. I came here in May of two thousand and ten. We're a pretty bare, plain police department. We're a no-frills police department. We have three typical divisions, patrol, investigations and administration. Like I said, for a city of our size, we offer basic minimal services. We have one hundred and twenty-three sworn officers with nine civilian members. There's our organizational chart. We actually have four point five fewer employees now than we had in two, twenty thirteen. The highlights from this past year, the Waterloo Police Foundation was established. We, that's where we utilize donated funds to try to enhance the community policing efforts of the police department. One good example is we had a large, or we had a contributor give us a large amount of money to come up with an officer recognition program. So once a month, we recognize an officer by having him donate two hundred dollars to a nonprofit that is present in Waterloo or has a impact in Waterloo. And the very first one we gave out was to the, the two hundred dollars we gave out was to Cedar Valley Hospice. We've established many partnerships with outside agencies and we've nurtured those in partnerships. One good example is two of our officers in the past year have become deputized as federal authorities. What's bad is we had to pull those officers from patrol to work with the ATF and the FBI, but we're prosecuting out many more of our violent gun crimes in federal court with this partnership. We had the formation of the citizen advisory team. That's the advisory team of the five felons that I sit down with so that we can talk about current events, issues at the police department and in essence, it's train the trainer. I can explain to them the processes at the police department and they can go back to the community and educate community members about the processes. The last time we met, we talked about officer accountability and officer discipline and I explained to them the process of officer discipline and the confidentiality laws involved and all the steps it that we need to go through when we discipline an officer. Our crime rate and our traffic crashes continued to fall. We've also began offering a juvenile diversion program in conjunction with Four Oaks. What we do is juveniles that have been arrested for interference, trespassing or disorderly conduct, they're put through a diversion program at Four Oaks that we will enhance or and contribute to. I go over there once a month to talk with these juveniles. This is an opportunity for me to get in front of them so that they can get to know me and the police department and also they express some of their concerns to me. One good question they had last month was they wanted to know why more of the officers don't tell them why they're making contact with them when they get stopped. And I said, that's a good point. Obviously, maybe we need to articulate the reasons for stopping people better, so that's something we're exploring right now. We had a lot of citizen involvement with in the police department last year. One good example is reaching for respect, which is an event that a lady from Cedar Falls just wanted to get involved with helping us educate the public in regard to our contacts with some members of the public. So she came up this with this fantastic program with the help of Abraham Funches, the State Patrol, Cedar Falls Police Department, the Sheriff's Department and the Waterloo Police Department's involvement so we could have events where we could better educate the community about our interactions with them.
And then I could want to add Lori Dale to that.
Yes.
As well. And then I think on the highlights also, that and some other conversations you've been having too, whether it's through the barber shops and initiating some of those opportunities and also the training that you had with, what's the gentleman?
Troy Cicero.
Yeah.
And we want to bring him back again this year. The officers, officers are, I don't want to say tough learners, but they're, they're apprehensive, they're guarded and some of the trainers we put in front of them. Troy Cicero came from Chicago, I think he grew up on the south side, the mayor had frequent conversations with him. The officers absolutely loved him. He had an impact on the police department, so we want to bring him back again this year to and expose him to even more employees, not just police department employees, but more employees of the city, but also with members of our community. Results, from two thousand and nine to two, twenty sixteen, we've seen a significant decrease across the board in many of the issues we deal with. Group A offenses, which are assault, robbery, murder, theft, drug laws, down twenty-one percent. Group B offenses, which are disorderly conduct, trespassing, alcohol laws, down forty-one percent. Our disorderly conduct incidents have fallen dramatically, it's just remarkable. Disorderly conduct alone is probably down seventy percent. So the total of our crime rate, the the total offenses that have been occurring in the city from two thousand and nine to twenty sixteen is down twenty-six percent. Traffic crashes are down twenty percent and this, this isn't just from two thousand and nine to twenty sixteen. Here is our, our crime rate and traffic crash rate over several years. I like to use the term, it's trending down. As a matter of, I was just, believe it or not, I was at a local watering hole last night and had myself a cool drink and one of the patrons in there came up to me and says he just feels a sense of calm has come over the city. And yes, we still have our incidents. We have, on occasion, we'll have a shooting, we'll still have a homicide, but a sense of calm is coming over Waterloo. We're seeing it in many parts of the city where we used to have some challenges. I think if a lot of, a lot of our residents look back several years ago and think of how it was downtown and West Fourth, it was pretty lively and there was a lot of activity as well as in other areas of the city. Now, of course, we do have some challenges in the seven hundred block of Logan and a couple other areas, but we're much better off today than we were six or seven years ago. And this is one thing that I'm particularly proud of, the, the service we give the residents of this city for the price that we provide it. All I did was I simply took the police budgets of these cities, their most recent police budgets and divided them by their population and Waterloo by far is a bargain compared to all these other cities. I don't want to diminish what these police departments are doing in these other cities, but Waterloo is a unique, interesting and sometimes challenging city to police. But the, the officers in this city are incredibly proud to serve, protect and offer these services to our residents and we do it for a bargain. Our goals for this year, now we track our goals from January first until December thirty-first, but our two thousand and seventeen goals are no traffic fatalities. We had too many last year, we had seven. And the one thing we've noticed is we're seeing too much aggressive driving in the city of Waterloo. I reached out to the State Patrol, they've been helping us out on the highway, but we want to come up with, we've got a couple of cars that, they look like your grandpa's Impala and they're equipped with emergency lights and sirens and we might use those more creatively to address the tailgating, speeding, aggressively driving in and out of traffic, blowing red lights. But one of the goals we have is no traffic fatalities for this year. We want to solve every homicide that occurs this year. Sadly, it'd be nice if we could go a whole year without a homicide, sadly, we've already had two. So one of our goals is to solve all of them. We've got a good, we've done a good job, we've got a fantastic track record for reducing crime. We want to continue to do that. We're involved with Sandy and IS to implement this investigatory traffic camera program and we also want to create a program focusing upon juveniles at risk of becoming involved with gangs. Not only do we want to create this program, but we, we want to do it through a nonprofit organization so there's minimal impact upon our taxpayers. So we've got a lot going on, we have a lot to look forward to and good things are happening with this police department in this city and we're just going to keep pushing it forward. One interesting thing I want to bring up is our calls for service. As the community has been calming, our calls for service has been going down. From an administrator's standpoint, that's very important. I think we've gone from about eighty thousand calls in two thousand and ten down to a little more than sixty thousand calls in two thousand and sixteen. The reason that's important from administrator's perspective or a chief executive officer's perspective is each one of those calls costs the city of Waterloo nine dollars. So if we've gone down about twenty thousand dollars, that's what, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And the way we've done that is we've made some policy, policy changes, we've made, we've made some operational changes, but we've also been successful in educating our community in regard to what is appropriate to call about. You know, we're, sometimes when people have nobody else to call, they will call the police department. But if you see a ghost on your second story, you don't need to call the police department. That cost us manpower, that cost us resources, so we've been very successful in that regard. That's cost efficiency that results in cost savings and we're going to continue to tweak that and try to improve it. That also gives our officers, if they're handling fewer calls, it gives them more opportunities to be community policers in our community. So that's, I'm, I'm proud of that, I'm proud of the service we offer the city and I think our budget went up one point eight percent. I mean, it did go up, but it has not been significant, it's negligible and that's pretty good for the service we offer.
All right, thank you. So overall, yours was just simply the pay, pay increases, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, sir, yes. Basically, it's a cookie cutter budget from previous years.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Director, you should take that one slide and reverse it to show that we're number one. That's remarkable that you're able to lower crime and have one of the lowest cost in the state. That must be a credit to how you run an efficient department, that's a great deal. Are you committed to putting these public safety cameras throughout, will that help policing?
It will help tremendously, yes. Yes, I'm committed to it.
And the, the final question I have is, you talked to us a couple of years, maybe a year ago, there was some anomaly, the way the dispatch was billing us for, did we get that fixed so we're paying our fair share of?
The way we're fixing it is we're handling fewer calls for service. If I'm not mistaken, some of the other cities, their calls for service continue to go up, ours continue to go down, go down because of these operational changes we have made and our education of the community.
Chief Troika?
Yes.
What's your view on the red light cameras?
I'm a fan. What's interesting is when I first came here from Wisconsin, I did not like them, I was an opponent, but then Cedar Rapids showed me the benefit they had down there in saving lives and lowering traffic crashes and I instantly became an advocate for them.
Any, any plans to pursue?
We've been talking about it, yes, sir.
Okay. As far as calls and initiating, dispatching, I guess, to a call, just coming here today, there was a fender bender right up here, so I look up and here's a police car, here's an ambulance, there's a fire truck. How do, any way to be more efficient in how we do that?
You know, many times when we respond to these calls, we don't have all the information, so typically the officers get there first and they try to triage it to the best of their ability. You know, sadly, we've had situations and not, one not too far away from here, about eight years ago, a young lady got out of her vehicle, she was able to walk and talk, but if I'm not mistaken, she had ruptured her aorta and died shortly thereafter. You know, we do the best we can.
Sure.
But we're far from perfection.
Last question. We have the umbrella of public safety and we have one city and we're hopefully trying to provide services and try to be as responsible as we can with our money and so we have other folks and trying to reduce costs to other cities like Cedar Falls, so could we look into, seriously look into cross-training some police officers to assist the fire department such as Cedar Falls has done?
You know, and that's something we have looked at, we have studied and what we have found is the, simply because, mostly because social economic factors, the type of policing we engage in in Waterloo is so different than the type of policing they engage in in Cedar Falls. That actually, it seems to work to an extent over there. In Waterloo, with the type of activity our officers engage in, we don't think it would work. And I'm, I'm not a proponent of it because many of the skills that law enforcement officers have, such as interrogation skills, even running radar, are perishable skills. Because when an officer runs radar, he's supposed to estimate the speed of that car before he looks at his radar and locks that speed in, perishable skills. As humans, if we try to maintain proficiency in too broad of a range, perishable skills all suffer. So, and I think that's why many states won't even allow your traditional or what you would call a public safety police department where they have employees who are trained as cops, paramedics and firefighters. I think there's a handful left in Michigan, maybe out east, and two cities in Wisconsin. So, so I'm not an advocate because of the perishable skill and we do that to such a great extent in Waterloo to begin with because so many of our, let's say, our investigators, our general practitioners and their investigative skills, we don't have a fraud unit, we don't have a crime against persons unit, we don't have a property crimes unit. All of our investigators are general practitioners. We don't have a traffic enforcement unit at the Waterloo Police Department. Basically, all of our uniformed officers are expected to enforce traffic laws and that, we're not pushing those skills out too broad for our employees not to be proficient, proficient in them.
Do we have any coordination though with our Cedar Falls? Can you talk about some of those? We have Tri County and-
Yes, we, we partner with Cedar Falls, the Sheriff's Department, the feds and state agencies with the Tri County Task Force. Again, some of our, our officers that have federal authority, what those federal agencies offer us is partnership with FBI agents or ATF agents to work alongside our officers with our officers spearheading and addressing some of the problems we have in town. So there are many collaborations, Highway two eighteen running through town, whenever I, we simply, many times Waterloo officers simply don't have time to get on Highway two eighteen and run radar. So when I mention it to Randy Olmstead, a lieutenant with the State Patrol, hey, could you guys help us out here a little bit? They help us. So those are the type of collaborations we engage in. The governor with his traffic safety grants that he provides, on occasion, not very often much anymore, but we will partner with Cedar Falls, in Cedar Falls with their officers to run these enforcement efforts and on occasion, they will come over here and do the same with us. So those are the types of collaborations we engage in. And let's face it, the, the policing needs and the type of policing in Cedar Falls are vastly different than the policing needs and the type of policing in Waterloo. And it's not because the cities are so different, it's, it's because of the social, social economics and our blue collar city. It's because of the social economics in our blue collar city compared to the education level and the social economics in Cedar Falls. I mean, any city you go to that's a college town of less than 50,000 people is Cedar Falls. But any blue collar manufacturing city you go to that looks like Waterloo, say Racine, Wisconsin, Kenosha, Wisconsin, same type of policing, same type of problems.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Chief Tralka?
Yes.
There has been questions raised that the bigger that a department gets within the city, many times, they tend to start getting top-heavy. How would you see our, the Waterloo Police Department, if that, with, as far as top-heavy, that category, do you see it being top-heavy at all?
No, not at all. I have three captains below me, and each of them has specific duties. What's nice about the way we operate with the four of us, myself and the three captains, on occasion, one of those individuals may not be available. That doesn't keep the stuff from landing on that person's desk. We're also general practitioners, is where we're able to fill in for that person when they're gone on vacation, or they have an injury. Recently, one of our captains suffered an injury. So to the best of our ability, we tried to fill in for him. He did end up with a lot on his desk anyway. But in my opinion, we are far from top-heavy, and what our residents pay for law enforcement services is a prime example of that we indeed are not. Matter of fact, the one concern I have is I feel like my sergeants, because the way our rank structure goes is there's me, captains, lieutenants, sergeants, and then officers. The one concern I have with the Waterloo Police Department is I have patrol sergeants who are supervising seven individuals. Considering the type of activity that we engage in, that's a very broad span of control. I would rather see it at four to five, but that means more money, and it's simply not there. So we do the best we can with what we have.
Well, thank you. Second question that I had, chief, was with this House study bill that was introduced here a couple days ago, that I see, anyway, deals a terrible blow to the issue of local control and home rule. If we're looking at investigative traffic cameras or even red light cameras, I don't believe those are state law. And would, if we, or we're trying to institute that, would that not be ruled unable to be done by this prohibition on home rule?
Probably. I like control to stay locally on many issues, because a good point I make is what works in Waterloo may not necessarily work in Cedar Falls, and that's a city right next to us. So some of our needs may be different than that other city. So I'm a big advocate, especially when it comes to policing. Big advocate of home rule.
And chief, maybe if Mr. Zellifer was here, we could ask that question. But being as it, this got brought up, I thought maybe you had already discussed that, or Mr. Mayor, maybe you had heard something about that relative to home rule when it comes to issues like this.
I will forward you any communication from the league that we get about this, because it is being discussed right now, but I don't have all the details for you. But I'll definitely forward you what I have.
Thank you.
Director, there's some cities...
We have one down here. Hold on. We have Mr. Anan.
One of the things, Chief Tralka, that I noticed in your PowerPoint, you're talking about at-risk youth and everything, but one of the things that you did not put in there was, is it something that you do, you talk to other youth besides at-risk, because I know I have a grandson who goes to East High, and one of the questions that you asked some of the students there was, is do you feel safe in the city of Waterloo? So it's just a matter of when you're out there talking with people, when you give a presentation, let people know that you're also talking to other youth out there as opposed to just the at-risk, if you would please.
Yes.
And I commend you on that, because they are a part of the community also.
Yes, sir.
Lately, there's been, in the news, some cities don't cooperate with all federal agencies. Is our policy to cooperate with all the federal enforcement agencies?
It is. We've got a fantastic partnership with our federal partners. As a matter of fact, when it comes to local law enforcement partnerships, I've never seen it better than what I see in the Cedar Valley.
Forest Dillou, 1725 Huntington Road. I have a long-term concern for the city of Waterloo. As the new president talked about Chicago and wanting to clean up Chicago, I can envision down the road, because someone else told me, that if they crack down on Chicago, those people are going to go other places. And we're close enough, we could very well see some of that coming our way. So we need to keep on our toes, and hopefully it's a long ways away, and hopefully they go some other direction. And your comment about the ghost in the window, I heard here a couple months ago, a lady called and said, "My son is in the backyard shot and bleeding to death," and your officers responded. And I believe in that week, several times, you had similar calls from the same house. Family refused to come and help you folks, and I can have strong appreciation. You have to respond, but you know it's the ghost in the window. But I know that we responded with less cars and so on, but I have high appreciation for what you do.
Thanks. And Mr. Dillou brings up a good point. The one thing I try to do to keep, to prepare Waterloo for the future is I closely watch what's occurring in other communities, Chicago, Cedar Rapids, Des Moines, Davenport. I meet on a quarterly basis with the chiefs from the largest cities in Iowa, so we can talk about what's currently happening in our cities in regard to violence and criminal activity. And we do that so that we can prepare for the future. What encourages me is, we're a city of 68,000 people. That's manageable. We're not several million like Waterloo. And in the past year, we've held many, many, many of our violent citizens accountable, meaning we arrested them for their violent behavior. And that's why we're seeing a lull in activity right now. The concern is, it seems like sometimes when you hold one individual accountable, it almost creates a vacuum, and all of a sudden, a new one crops up, and he's younger. And that's why we need to get to these younger men to keep them from engaging in violent criminal behavior.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. Mr. Tralka, you commented about initial contact with somebody who was pulled over, personal experience. I asked the officer three times before he finally told me, after he ran me through the drug test and blew in the machine and the whole works, what he pulled me over for. I came here in October of 2009. I was pulled over in middle or early in 2010. I'd forgotten to update my license. My sticker was wrong. And it took me three times, and after all the other rigmarole, for him to finally tell me what he pulled me over for, after asking three times. So that is something that I think is needed. We're hearing a lot of calls, and everybody's dispatched. Is that somewhat a little bit of the dispatcher training to get the right information to know whether to dispatch an ambulance, ambulance and fire, ambulance, fire and police, because it's an accident and there's somebody trapped in the car or a potential fire, or if it's a house call and a medical emergency, do we need fire and police? So my question is, is that possibly a little bit of dispatcher training, so that when they get that 911 call, they don't just automatically push the button on all three departments? And the last thing is, you see on TV, and I don't know what's done in some of the bigger cities, but the beat cop. Would a beat cop scenario in this town, because you said it's manageable, help improve the attitude and the relationship between the citizens and the police department?
All right, Dan. When you, the two to respond to is dispatcher for efficiency, I would probably say, and then a beat cop philosophy or approach.
With our dispatchers, it could be a training issue. But keep in mind, again, the, when these calls come out, in particular, 911 calls of a significant event, sometimes we get multiple callers with limited information. Here's a good example. I like to get out with the midnight shift officers once a week. And last week, a woman called 911. She said, "He's got a gun," and she hung up. That's all we had to go on. We didn't even have a locate, the only reason, the only way we had the location is because of the, even with a cellphone, we can get the GPS coordinates. So that's what we responded on. And we actually recovered a gun. The guy did have a gun. So sometimes, there's just such little, and we sent a lot of officers to that one. We sent seven cops. If it would have been an eight-year-old kid with a water pistol, we would have only needed two cops, but we still would have sent seven. A lot of our dispatchers right now are fairly new. They're so new because the city of Waterloo, the police department just hired three dispatchers within the past year. That makes me think that we're a highly desirable employer. They want to come work for us. So it's inexperienced, and it does take more training, more effort, more time, because it's, I couldn't be a dispatcher. With the multitasking and all they need to handle, they impress me. I'm much better suited to be a cop. But training could be a part of it. We are pretty efficient. We're good at doing our jobs. But sometimes, when it's a highly critical call that appears like it may be a major issue, we just send a lot of people. We'd rather have too many and not need them than not enough and need them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Well, beat cops, I'm sorry.
Couple final things. First of all, thank you, Dan Tralka, for doing what you do for Waterloo. And I appreciate it, and I appreciate your open door policy that lets us come in and talk to you when you're there. I know you're busy, so...
I love to get out.
Yes. But the other thing is that I wish that you, and maybe the mayor has to approve this, but the relative safety of being downtown Waterloo does not get spoken enough. And I wish that there was a way that you could do a guest editorial or something to Tim Jamison's paper that would, oh, excuse me, it's not Tim's.
The Tim Courier.
To the Waterloo Courier, that would state exactly that, you know, how safe it is to be and to come into downtown Waterloo. It doesn't get said enough. Downtown Waterloo is being beautified. It's relatively, I mean, if you compare it to other cities, downtown's safe. You've made it safer, your policies and what you've done have made it safer. I just wish that that could get expressed through like a guest editorial or something, if you could get together with the mayor, just a suggestion, chief, but thank you again.
The beat cop, I just, I have a quick answer for that. We're trying, Mr. Dryer. We've been trying for years. A couple things work against us. Our call volume, which is getting better, but the size of our city, 63 square miles, that's the size of Madison, Wisconsin. It may not be as populated, but if a guy on the southwest side of Waterloo needs a cop on that corner, we got to go. But we're trying to get to the point where we can have more officers on foot in some of our more challenging neighborhoods.
But you've also taken to an approach of also visiting places before they become an issue, whether it's a barber shop, whether it's a park with operation, public safety. But, you know, try it in certain increments to be able to be in different places outside of it being a problem first, so...
Yes, sir. And when it comes to barber shops, I haven't paid for a haircut in 20 years.
All right. I think, what do we have? Monday, we have several more to go. So, you know, eight more, eight more. So I want to thank all of you that were in attendance today. Thank you council members for your diligence and for being here, and Michelle and staff, and I guess Kelly and Ed as well. Thank you, even Tim Jamison. We recognize you're here. So can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppo, I mean, opposed, we adjourn.